Meeting of the Santa Barbara County Planning Commission for December 7, 2011. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, Mr. Villalobos. Will you please call roll and give us the TV coverage announcer?
Good morning, and yes, certainly, Mr. Chair. Planning Commission hearings are televised live on County Santa Barbara television, CSB-TV Channel 20 at 9:00 AM, in the South Coast, Lompoc, San Inez Valley, Santa Maria and Orchid areas. Rebroadcasting Planning Commission hearings are on Fridays at 5:00 PM on CSB-TV Channel 20. And now for the roll call. Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Brooks?
Here.
Commissioner Blau?
Aye.
Commissioner Cooney?
Here.
And for the record, Commissioner Valencia is absent today.
Thank you, Mr. Villalobos. Good morning, Ms. Black. Welcome back.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. Would you like me to go into the agenda?
I would love it.
Status report?
Follow the usual practice.
We did publish a revised agenda yesterday. There is one consent item on your agenda that was continued from your Monday hearing. It's the Rice Ranch matter. And then we have two standard items on the agenda, the first being the Santa Barbara Student Housing Cooperative project, the development plan, and then the courtesy review of the Sampson-Foothill Development Project that's being processed by the City of Santa Barbara. We also have our holiday lunch today, and we are anticipating having lunch at about 11:30. And we are ready to move forward with all those items today.
And the projection report.
Yes, so our final hearing of the year is next Wednesday, December 14th. That hearing will be in Santa Maria. We have several items on. We have the Orchid Key Site III project coming back to your commission. We have the Alisol Ranch Appeal of the Edison Street Gas Station and Car Wash substantial conformity determination. So this was actually a project that was approved by the zoning administrator, then modified slightly under a substantial conformity and appealed. And so that appeal is before your commission. We also have the Youngman Ordinance Amendment. That's a request to initiate an ordinance amendment to allow all of oil processing in the Ag II Zone districts. And then finally, the Mobile Home Park Closure Ordinance. We already canceled the hearing, our first hearing of January, January 4th, and so our actual first hearing will be on January 11th. We've made a bit of a change to that agenda. We were planning on having the Las Varares project on that day. However, we were slightly delayed in releasing, delayed by about a week in releasing the EIR. And so we have shifted that to January 18th to honor the commitments that were intended to be honored when we agreed to the January 11th date. So we will be bringing back the Vincent Tier III Winery on January 11th, as well as the Cavalletto Tree Farm Housing Project. And then on January 18th, which will also be in Santa Barbara, we have the briefing on the Regional Transportation Plan and Sustainable Communities Strategy. We have a recorded map modification, Brechin, or Burkine, excuse me. We are planning on bringing Icon Gardens. I would say that one is not 100% certain, but we hope to be able to bring that on January 18th, and then the Las Varares project will begin its review with the commission on that day. Your commission also, I understand, on Monday continued the Park Hill Item 2, January 15th. That hearing will commence after the Montecito Planning Commission concludes their business. We're not exactly sure if-
Did you mean January 25th?
Both of these items, did I say something?
15th.
I meant the 25th, excuse me. I'm not sure if both of the items that are shown on the projection report today will indeed go forward, so I will let you know on January 11th when that hearing will commence, and we'll be sure and let the public know as well. And that's as far out as we've projected at this point. Mr. Chair, I'm hoping to have more items projected into February so we can kind of plan the beginning of your 2012 calendar at the next hearing.
It's already been planned.
It is.
Commissioner Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Black, can we do a no earlier than time for Cavalletto? Or I'm not sure what the sequence is going to be for that day, whether you want to hear Vincent's first and then Cavalletto, but I know neighbors will be asking, and rather than have everybody sitting here.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brown, we certainly can. They're both continued items, and so it's really up to the commission as to how you'd like to handle that day. I don't have any particular preference, so.
Well, what had been your plans? What were you going to, which one was going to be heard first in the order in which they appear?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brown, I don't even think we thought about the order at this point.
Well, I just-
I think that Vincent will probably take longer than an hour and a half.
Yeah.
That's my guess.
So if we were to put Cavalletto at 1?
We could do that, or we could do Cavalletto first.
I'd rather-
Why don't we do Cavalletto first?
First.
Let's do that.
Okay.
We'll do that. That'd be great. Okay, and then Vincent would be no earlier than 1.
I think that's a safer bet than-
Yeah, okay, let's do that then. Great, thank you. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you for the suggestion.
Anything else from commissioners with regard to the projection report? Seeing nothing, thank you, Ms. Black. That brings us to the point in our meeting where we invite members of the public to address the commission on matters not on today's agenda. We do have one speaker slip from Mr. Thorndike. Good morning, Mr. Thorndike.
And good morning, Mr. Cooney and Board.
I'm sure your comments will attempt to link up somehow with the jurisdiction of the County Planning Commission.
I think it will. I got good news for you. I'm John Thorndike of Upper Torah County Road, where County Road ends abruptly, my property crosses where it ends. Both sides, it ends, okay? And my property is a half mile long, goes up to the National Forest. Now, the county got, due to stubborn feuding with the court, which they have done for 20 years on the court's decision in this matter, they wouldn't do it the court's way. And as a result of Shane's stubbornness, we have, the county versus the court turf war began when the state court, across the street, by the way, granted a confirmation of my fee ownership of parcel 15. It confirmed that the records was right, and that I'd been paying taxes on that all along. Shane wanted the court to appoint one of Shane's deputies as a special master to the court. The court said, "No, sir. Court doesn't delegate its court authority to anyone." Shane said, "Okay, so be it," and ignored the 13 instructions to quiet the titles and record them as corrected and court-directed, using MOEs instead, Memorandings of Understanding, This is a fact, and I have witnessed the feud with the court in the room on the fourth floor, standing next to me, and Shane going up to the court and saying, and I'm talking about, well, I'll just be courteous about it. Hello, Frank, what brings you in here today? I didn't hear that part, what the answer was. You know, Frank, if you're bewildered in any way, your turf is across the street.
Mr. Thorndike, you mentioned good news.
Oh, yes, I have some good. Okay, all right, okay. I came back, I came back 20 years ago from an extended trip, Belgium, France, Germany, Russia, Israel. I was very happy I got back from Israel. And I was a day late in court. I had hired lawyers and said, "I will accept the judge's decision. I'm not going any further. No more money for this." And that's the way I did it. And I wasn't the only one that did it that way. We were all disappointed, but that's what happened. I came back and I lost my car and the passport and money and ID of all kinds, but I did win the confirmation that I owned and fee and paid taxes on such as parcel 15 of 1550215. And the county balked at recording this court's conclusion, and as a result, you get, they used MOUs instead of recording the facts. And as a result, we have to get that straightened out.
You've used your time.
The good news is, I'll straighten it out if I get a hearing. All I have to do is get a hearing after I get my eye operated on, on the 20th, and I'll have a new eye for Christmas, and I'll be young and vigorous again, instead of an old man of 84. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and happy holidays, and good luck with your procedure.
I'd have told this personally to the Board yesterday, but I had to stay. We had an honor guard affair for the Pearl Harbor victims that live where I live. And so I didn't make it up there. I'm giving the message to you to pass it on. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Not seeing anyone rise, and Commissioner Brown's checking the speaker slips. Okay. We have, we have no further public comment, then, so we will move to Planning Commissioner informational reports. Are there any? Yes, Commissioner Blau?
Yeah, I'm sure there's information report. This is, I don't know where else to put this in the request today, but I'd like to ask staff to consider changing our requirements for exhibits that you bring to us. I'd like to see these plans come to us in 11-by-17 format, not by these big plans. Like to save a few trees if we could, and these are very difficult for, actually for me to deal with. I find 11-17 is much easier to deal with. And an alternative to that would be to give me the, most developers now, most architects are putting these on a PDF format, putting them on a disk, so it's like 50 cents instead of, these things cost lots and lots of money. The advantage for that is, if there's a portion of what I can't read, if it's in a PDF format, I can put it on my computer, and I can blow it up to where the smallest little writing can be on my entire screen. But I really don't want to get any more of these if we can possibly avoid it. It's expensive for the client, it's hard for me to handle, and it's a waste of trees. So that would be my request in the future.
Thank you, Commissioner Blau. Anyone else? Commissioner Brown? No. Okay. Then we'll move to the Director's Report. Well, let's do the Director's Report, and then we can free you up.
Good morning, Chair Cooney. Commissioners, it's a pleasure to be here. I have a relatively brief report for you today. Since the last time that I reported, there have only been two board hearings, on the 15th and on, yesterday, the 6th. On the 15th, there wasn't too much from PND. There was reappointment, or extension of appointments for the Summerland PAC, so that was done, to keep them available for their role in the process. Yesterday, we continued the Bagdad Zarian Appeal, which is a violation case from Montecito. We're moving towards what we hope to be resolution, but we just didn't have time to get that all ready, so it'll be going to the Board on the 17th. They gave us the authorization for closure, so for the furloughs, so our offices will be basically closed from beginning the Friday, December 23rd. We will reopen again for business on Tuesday, January 3rd. In addition, the Board approved the economic hardship time extensions, or there were a variety of those, to allow us to extend permits. Those would have, the ability to do so was going to expire on the 12th of January, and given the extended economic downturn, the Board approved an extension of our ability to grant such hardship requests until the 12th of January 2015. We, they approved, the Board approved, our change in code regarding hydraulic fracturing, a change in our zoning code that makes it explicitly clear that if you are going to hydraulic fracture on a new permit or an existing permit, you need to undergo environmental review, and the necessary permit for that is an oil drilling and production plan, which would come to the Planning Commission. So that's done, well, first reading is done. Presumably, it will, the second reading next week will go smoothly, and it will be in effect 30 days later. And then the other item of interest yesterday was the award of CREF funds. And the, we went to the Board, the CEO's office, went to the Board requesting $250,000 for the Guadalupe Dunes access road that was washed away, which pays for most of that, and then also $296,000 for the next year of the Gaviota Plan. Those were approved, and in addition, Supervisor Carvajal asked for approximately $96,400 for the continued design and permitting and environmental review phase of the Santa Claus Lane Project, and that was also granted. And those are the items that I have to tell you about today. If you have any questions on those or any others, I'd be happy to respond.
Any questions from commissioners? Oh, I don't think so. Thank you very much for coming. Hope to see you a little later in the day. All right, now we have the minutes of several meetings. The first is October 26th. Were there any comments, changes, or a motion for approval as to those minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Next, November 2.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Brooks. Commissioner Brown, thank you. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And November 9.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. And finally, November 16, special hearing.
Mr. Chair, before I, or before any commissioner makes a motion, these are rather extensive minutes, and some very important ones, since they are the conclusion and the recordation of our deliberations on many issues on the update to the Eastern Galita Valley Community Plan. And I, while I've read them, it would be, it's important for me to, and I would like to have the time to do this, is to go back and review our November 16th meeting and compare my recollection and what I've recorded with what is proposed here. So if the commission agrees with that, then I would either like to ask for a continuance of approving these minutes until next week, or later today, whichever works for the commission.
Would one week be sufficient?
Oh, yeah, it should be, right.
Well, then I would suggest that-
We do it next week.
We have a motion to continue the-
Okay, then I'll make that motion to continue these minutes until our meeting of next week. Thank you.
And I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Brooks?
Yes, I did go through them quite thoroughly. I did have that time. And I had some questions, so I'm very glad to hear that Commissioner Brown is going to ask for this to be continued.
We'll take these up at our next meeting on the 14th. So we have a motion in a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Okay, that takes care of the minutes, I believe, and then we next go to the consent agenda. We have one item. Commissioner Blau has indicated he'd like to be heard on this matter. Why don't we read this into the record?
Thank you. The following is a hearing on the request of Planning and Development Parks and General Services Department to consider case number 11GOV15, application filed on November 18th, 2011, for determination that the proposed acquisition by dedication to the county is consistent with the comprehensive plan of the County of Santa Barbara pursuant to Government Code Section 65402(c).
Thank you, Chair.
Cooney, I have two questions, maybe two issues that staff can address. The first is, we know that this project's coming back before us for some modifications. Some of the modifications may include adjusting lot lines that would now either swap land with, which now going to be parks land that's owned by the county, and there may be actually some adjustments where it's not a net swap, that we actually acquire part of that. So I want to make sure that by doing this granting of the park to the county, that we're not going to interfere with or cause ourselves a problem when we want to review the project when it comes before us in the next month, or whenever comes before us. That's the first question.
Well, Commissioner Blau, would it be acceptable to you to take this off the consent agenda, then we'll-
Yeah, that's what we're doing, yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay, so let's do that. If no one has an objection, and you had another question.
Yeah, that's, yeah, the second question has to do with the bonding, but if we can address the first question first, then I'll ask the second question.
Ms. Black?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, maybe I can put this into a bit of context, and just to point out to the commission, we do have staff available in the North County. I also think we have some speakers that are in the North County. So this item is before your commission in anticipation of an item that's at the Board of Supervisors on December 13th. So your, the request before you today is that you find acquisition of the parks and trails to be consistent with the general plan. It's a fairly limited request. There are a number of issues that I believe need to be addressed for the Board of Supervisors consideration of this matter at their hearing on December 13th. Now, I'll answer your question more directly, but I thought, I wasn't sure all of the commissioners were up to speed on where we were at. In response to your question about the application that's pending before the department and that your commission will be considering and making a recommendation to the Board on, we understand that you can exchange property that's granted to the county that's of equivalent value. It doesn't have to be the equivalent acreage, but it does need to be of equivalent value.
Okay.
Okay. And then as to the bonds, did you already answer?
Correct. The other question has to do with the bonds that are currently being posted. Is there some mechanism where you're going to get those bonds released or modified, and is that going to occur and get consensus with the property, current property owner before the 13th?
Mr. Chair, we will, and Commissioner Blau, we will look at that matter, and we will report to the Board on the disposition of those bonds before they consider an action on the 13th.
Okay.
I don't think it influences the commission's determination as to whether or not this acceptance would be consistent with the comprehensive plan, but we will certainly look into that matter and raise it with the Board.
Thank you. Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a question for County Council. Does our making the consistency determination have any effect on the issues addressed in Ms. Temora's email?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brown, I'm not sure exactly which email you're referring to.
Well, the one we got yesterday.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brown, I did see this email, and now I know what you're referring to. And what's before your commission is just the question of whether or not acceptance of this land is consistent with the community plan, or, and with the comprehensive plan. So as Ms. Black indicated, some of the issues that are raised, we will sort out before the Board takes action on the 13th. But to answer your question directly, no. I think your, the issue before you is just whether or not acceptance of the dedication is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
And Council, the section we're using is 65402 sub-A or C?
Mr. Chair, you're correct. There's actually a typo on that. It is 65402A, and that change should be reflected in the report.
All right, we, we have two speakers on this item from the North County. Lori Temora is first, and Rick Corbo is also present in the North County. Good morning, Ms. Temora.
Good morning. Thank you. My name is Lori Temora, and I'm here today with Jim Loja from Rice Ranch Ventures. And we would like to put on the record first that the Rice Ranch specific plan is consistent with Key Site 12. We understand that there is open space that will be provided to the county as part of the original approvals. However, we think that this action, and taking this to the Board of Supervisors is premature, and staff has not adequately informed the Planning Commission on multiple levels of issues associated with this action. First of all, we're really surprised that county staff did not approach us or notify us in regards to how this was being brought to the Planning Commission. We heard about this last Thursday evening, and really was taken back by that we had not had any communication with staff. Secondly, the actions that are brought before you are not consistent with Planning Commission's action of last March. We have initiated a specific plan change for the Rice Ranch project in regards to multiple issues brought by the county, as well as by the recent economy. We are redesigning the project. The open space parcels that were recorded in 2005 are changing. What is being proposed here today is not consistent with the Planning Commission's actions of last March, nor is it consistent with the Parks Department's direction to us as, to remove the neighborhood parks out of public ownership and make them private parks within the various neighborhoods. The trails are changing. The infrastructure that is to provide to the open space is changing. We are, we are working with both Parks Department and Public Works to amend the specific plan. And it's important for both the Planning Commission and staff to remember that we have a general plan, a community plan, and then as part of the community plan, specific plans are part of the general plan. And the specific plan, as it was approved in 2003, as it was recorded in 2005, is not consistent with 2011 issues and policies that are being brought forth by county staff, both in the Parks Department, Planning Department, and Public Works. What is before you is not consistent with what is happening today. We have conditions of approval within the approved specific plan that involve construction of the trails, construction of trailheads, landscaping, signage, planting a substantial amount of biological- amount of biological resources within the open space area that has not even started. We have bonds in place to complete all of these that are conditions of approval of the community plan and the specific plan, and yet the county is saying that we're consistent with it, but we haven't completed the task. Staff has not provided to you enough information to make an informed decision. This is premature. We are one hundred percent in support of working with the county staff, resolving these issues before you take an action or make a recommendation to the board. We understand that the reason-
Ms. Temura, you've, you've gone to four minutes now. Are you about to wrap up?
If I could just say two items, please?
Go ahead.
We, we understand that the reason this was brought before you is because of local requests to establish trails within the Orchid foothills. We are willing, and we are working with and want to work with the community to provide access to the trails. That's not what's on the table today. The issue is, we have nothing in writing from staff that will allow us to do lot line adjustments in the future. We have nothing from staff in regards to how these bonds are going to be handled, or how the conditions of approval will be met. And we're fearful that this train has left the station, and they forgot about the project. So we're asking for a continuance of this item. We need to meet with staff, we need to meet with the supervisors, and resolve these issues before county accepts this land for parks and open space.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and we're available for any questions.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any questions right now. Let's hear from Mr. Corbo.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and fellow commissioners. My name is Rick Corbo, and I'm a resident of Orchid. I've lived here for many, many years. I've raised three kids here. We have dogs. I'm married to a veterinarian. And we just want to have the open space available to hike with our dogs, to, to run, to do mountain biking, and do different things. If you go to the Rice Ranch Development, as we do almost every weekend, you see there's signage that says miles and miles of open space for hiking. There's not. We'd like to make that happen. There's, the Orchid Community Plan, which was enacted, I think, back in nineteen ninety-seven, before two of my kids were born, one's now in eighth grade, that contains Appendix C, which is the multi-use trails plan and trails siding guidelines. It's a very specific plan within the Orchid Community Plan that talks about the trails and talks about the parcels of land that are required for the trailheads. I think it's a very important thing that, that we allow the trails to go forward and the open space to be used for the community here in Santa Maria, in the Santa Maria Valley. The trails are significant because that will attract buyers to property. If there's trailheads adjacent to the Rice Ranch development, that is what's going to be, bring the buyers in. Right now, you have trails that, that aren't there. We need them open. And I request that if you look at what has been submitted by, by the staff, all they're saying it's consistent with the Orchid Community Plan, Appendix C. It's there, you can look at it. So it's a very simple thing we do today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Corbo. Are there any other public speakers on this item? I don't see any, and I don't believe there are any in Santa Maria. So let's bring this back to staff. Are there any additional comments that you wish to make, Ms. Black? Or I see Mr. Garcia-Selay in the audience. He may have something to add, I'm not sure.
Mr. Chair, and members of the commission, Mr. Garcia-Selay is here to answer any questions your commission may have. I don't have any additional comments. I really believe this is a fairly simple matter for the commission. I agree that there are some issues that need to be sorted out before we go to the Board of Supervisors for a decision, but I believe that the commission has the information to make the determination we've requested today.
Thank you, Ms. Black. I, I think the issue before the commission, as opposed to the board, is not whether to accept these open space and trail easements, but whether if the board were to do that, is it consistent with the Orchid Community Plan? And, and as Ms. Temura points out, any other general plan issues? And the recommendation of staff is, is that it is consistent. Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is, is there a, this is going to the board next week. Does this need to be done this year? Does the board's action need to be taken this year?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brown, that's really up to the board.
They've previously agenda, I mean, they've been some, they've agendized that based upon some internal reason-
Requests.
Oh, it's a request from the, from the supervisor of the district to do that? Is that?
It, it was a, a general request that we received, and so we've agendized it for consideration.
Okay, all right, fine, thank you.
Any further questions from commissioners? Anything further from staff before we? All right. In the absence of Commissioner Valencia, the Commissioner for the Fourth District, can we have a motion to accept the recommendation of staff as set forth in the December five, two thousand and eleven, staff report?
So moved.
Commissioner Blau moves, and Commissioner Brooks seconds. Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Vialos.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Blau.
Aye.
Commissioner Cooney.
Aye.
Motion passes, four to zero.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll take just a couple of minutes to allow staff and the applicant to set up for item number one on our agenda today. This is the Santa Barbara County Planning Commission meeting of December the seventh, two thousand and eleven, and item number one is, is the Santa Barbara Student Housing Cooperative Change of Use. If you'd read that into the record, Mr. Vialos.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The following is a hearing on the request of the Pycard Group Architects LLP, representing the Santa Barbara Student Housing Cooperative, to consider the following: ten DVP-19, ten CUP-33, ten CDP-82, applications filed on December ninth, two thousand and ten, September fifteenth, two thousand and ten, and September sixteenth, two thousand and ten, and to determine that the project is exempt from seek-up pursuant to section one-five-three-oh-three of the state guidelines for implementation of the California Environmental Quality Act.
Thank you very much. Before we turn to staff, can we have any indication from commissioners as to ex parte communications or site visits? Commissioner Brooks?
Yes, thank you, Chair Cooney. I made a site visit last week. By site visits to Isla Vista are always very enlightening. I met with Ms. Plowman and with Mr. Jeffrey Besmer, yes, who is the, I guess, Executive Director of the Santa Barbara Student Housing Co-op. Thank you.
Ms., Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I made a site visit previous to the original hearing date for the project. I got a call from Ms. Plowman, and I talked to Mr. Craig Guyer, a member of the community, this morning on my way into the hearing.
Thank you. Commissioner Blau? Okay, I had a meeting with Ms. Plowman as well, and, and also visited the site about a month ago. Oh, with that, then, we'll welcome Mr. Drew.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. I'm going to give a very brief introduction today, and then I'm going to turn the bulk of the presentation over to Alan Bell. This item was last before you, four months ago, and at that time, the applicant had requested a continuance so that they could work out some details within their project, most notably issues related to parking. The staff report that you have before you today is the exact same staff report that we gave you four months ago. You'll note, when Alan gives his presentation, there has been some work over the past forty-eight hours between staff and the applicant and their agent to try to work out some additional details. Alan will go over those, so there'll be a little bit of amending some of the findings and the notes in the staff report, and we'll go over those very clearly and specifically. The applicant is also here, and they'll try to fill in any blanks that they've come up with over the past twenty-four hours in terms of the issues they've been working with very consistently over the past couple of months on the parking issue. So with that, I'll turn the presentation now over to Alan. He has a brief PowerPoint presentation, and then we'd be glad to try to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Drew. Welcome, Mr. Bell.
Good morning, thank you. I'm Alan Bell, Planner with the Development Review Division. And as Kevin mentioned, this project was scheduled to come for you several months ago. In the last short period, there were two notable changes that I wanted to note that affect, and actually, in some respects, make, simplify some of the presentation we do today. When staff initially calculated the parking requirements for this, we included one space for a visitor parking that was associated with a multifamily development. After reviewing that with the applicant over the past day, we agreed that that one sparking, one parking place for the visitors was not required for this dormitory-style project. So just please note, the parking requirements in the staff report are stated to be twenty-eight, but with that correction, they're actually twenty-seven. And we'll go into a little bit more detail about where those parking spaces will occur. The second change is really among the applicant's preferences. Their initial preference and request was to modify the parking requirements, to reduce the parking requirements from twenty-seven to twelve onsite spaces. If that alternate, if that preference was not acceptable to the commission, the applicant was then proposing to do a combination of onsite and offsite parking. Yesterday, they decided to withdraw the first option, to not request the reduction in parking, but the project would actually be to provide the full number of parking spaces through a combination of onsite and offsite parking. So when I do my presentation today, we'll just not go into the whole discussion that's covered in the staff report about the reasons why staff didn't feel it was appropriate to reduce the parking level to that amount, but we'll simply focus on the onsite and offsite parking. And I understand that the applicant and the agent may have a few other points that they want to make to you as well, and we'll let them do that during their presentation. Just for orientation purposes, the project is located on Camino Pascadero, just a little bit south of the junction of El Callejo. So where the arrow is pointing here, we have the San Clemente Housing Project. The university is off to the east, and the building site is actually shown in red here. It's designated as a high-density student residential with up to twenty units per acre. And it, the property, as you, has been indicated, is owned by the Santa Barbara Student Housing Co-op since earlier this year. Just going in for a little closer look, this is the project site. The arrow outlines the boundaries. The project site includes an office building that was built in about nineteen seventy. It's about seventy-six hundred square feet. It is used essentially for professional offices at this point in time. The site includes twelve onsite parking places. And two important things that factor into the characteristics of this lot. The lot in gross size is about twenty-two thousand square feet. However, a large portion of it, or a significant portion, is within the county road right-of-way. So the net size of the lot is actually around a little over fifteen thousand square feet. And I simply mention that because that factors into some of the parking calculations when we look at the gross lot size. The other fact to point out, which affects some of the requests, is the fact that this is actually a corner lot. We have Camino Pascadero here, but we also have a side street that comes in that serves five parcels and serves as the primary access. So when we talk about some of the modifications, it's influenced by the fact that we actually have two front yard setbacks, one along Camino Pascadero, and then one along the driveway street exit here, which we'll go into a bit more. The proposed project itself basically consists of converting the office structure into a dormitory-style student housing facility. This is a situation where you would have bedrooms, a common bathroom, and then separate bathrooms downstairs, and a communal kitchen setup and a communal dining setup. So we actually look at it as essentially not as multifamily, but as a, essentially a, a one-unit type of dwelling. It has twelve bedrooms. Some will be shared bedrooms, some will be single. There'll be a total of eighteen residences. It also includes living and dining rooms, kitchen areas, baths for living space. There's also a meeting room that's specifically for nonprofit organizations, and specifically would be limited to the use of the co-op itself and the associated co-op buildings. As I mentioned, there are twelve onsite spaces, and the project includes fifteen offsite spaces at a parking facilities owned by the university. There would be one and a half employees onsite. There's no formal office space. They would simply use areas that are more communal in nature within the meeting room, but they would operate on the site itself. And then, as I mentioned, there are a few uses that are proposed within the setbacks themselves. And specifically, this plan basically shows some of those, and we'll talk about them in a little bit more detail, but those uses that would, are proposed in the setback that are not allowed without some type of modification include an unpermitted storage shed building of about a hundred square feet in the front setback. We have one new parking place that's in the front setback. We have two uncovered bike racks that are in the front setback along Camino Pascadero, and then we have one trash enclosure in the rear setback. The one thing to note about the one parking place here is that there are currently twelve parking places. As part of the project, they're combining two of those so that they have a handicap-accessible spot, and then by developing this new spot in the front yard setback, they maintain twelve parking places onsite. In terms of the permit requirements themselves, development within this designation typically requires a development plan. So we do have an application for a development plan. In addition, since it includes a meeting space or meeting room for a nonprofit organization, we also are required to process that through a minor conditional use permit. And as part of the project, there are modifications being proposed both under the development plan and under the conditional use permit. The principal issue that the project poses is the parking, and that's not surprising given some of the conditions in Isla Vista, and the fact that we have a structure that was constructed in the nineteen seventies when we had different parking requirements. In order for the project to go forward and be approved, there are certain modifications that will be required to the parking regulations. Staff has reviewed those very carefully, and we do recommend the project, and we do recommend the modifications being approved. As background, we went through and calculated the parking requirements, and it's based on a number of combination factors, including the number of bedrooms, and then there are some requirements also for excess space outside of the bedroom space themselves. But when we looked at it in total, as I mentioned, the figure that we now came to is twenty-seven parking spaces. And these parking spaces, according to the provisions, can be onsite, and they can be offsite. However, for the offsite parking, the requirements are that it be within five hundred feet of the project site, and that the spaces be permanently dedicated to the development for which those spaces are allocated for. As I mentioned, there are twelve spaces onsite. After the project, there will continue to be twelve spaces, and then the applicant proposes to lease fifteen spaces from the university. Just to give you an idea, here's a quick layout of the building again. Camino Pascadero runs north and south here. The driveway comes in from the side here. Access comes in off the driveway, and the parking spaces are actually located along the rear portion of the property, and then, again, one within the, the new spot within the front setback there. So that would provide the handicap space- So that would provide the handicap space here in addition to 11 other normal parking spaces, and those comprise the onsite parking. The offsite parking would occur through parking that was developed as part of the San Clemente Housing Project for the university. This parking consists of basically two components. There's an existing parking lot located at this point here, and it's parking lot number 53. So the project site is located here, and about 700 feet to the north is the parking lot. This parking lot has a capacity of somewhere a little over 100 vehicles. The alternative parking, should this area be full, would be the parking structure that's located just beyond and adjacent to El Callejo, and the distance between the project site and the parking structure itself is about 2,300 feet. So when we're looking at the parking and the issues, there are really three modifications under the conditional use permit that would need to be granted in order for the parking to be approved and modified as proposed. The first is the increase of distance to the offsite parking. The requirement states that it should be within 500 feet, and as we just reviewed, the parking will actually be between 700 and 2,300 square feet away from the site itself. There's also a requirement that the parking spaces be permanently dedicated for that particular development. In this case, the university has a practice of not doing that. Their approach is to show that there would be adequate capacity at the facilities and not actually designate particular parking spots for the particular development. And then there's also the requirement that parking is not allowed in the front setback, but we have one spot that's being proposed here. So staff went through and reviewed these requests and found that under the particulars and after going through and discussing some of it with the Board of Architectural Review that we could support these. Let me just briefly touch upon a couple of these. The distance issue, the distance from the project site to lot number 53 is about 700 feet. The advantage here is that it's actually a straight walk. When you essentially step out in front of the building, you almost have a line of sight to the parking lot. So we felt that given that direct route, sidewalks exists, it takes about three to four minutes to walk from the project site to that parking lot. It seemed reasonable to allow a bit of a modification for the distance there. When it comes to the offsite location that's 2,300 feet away, that is a parking structure. We recognize that it is further than what we would typically look at. However, we also look at the purpose of this structure and its proximity to the university. And what we found is that this is intended to be occupied by students. They typically will walk or ride a bike to work because of the parking problems. So as a result, there's less daily driving of vehicles and a higher demand for a longer-term parking situation, which we found that the parking structure would be well-suited for because it typically has a much, much higher vacancy rate than the parking lot itself. So it would be conducive for students for parking their cars there for longer periods of time as opposed to trying to provide additional parking just within the site itself. When it comes to the permanently dedicated situation, we found in some that the parking structure and the parking lot itself would have adequate capacity. When they were approved, the Coastal Commission required the structures to include about, or that complex to include about 976 parking spaces. What they actually did is they overbuilt. There are actually about 1,003 parking spaces, and recent surveys show that parking right now is at about 65% within those areas. So we felt that even though the parking places would not be dedicated, the information currently available shows that there is plenty of capacity to absorb the 15 spaces that would be leased from the co-op itself. The last provision is the parking space in the front setback, and that is one which is on the kind of the north side with the small drive there. It would be partially screened. It's adjacent to the building. We just didn't think that it presented much of an issue from a view shed standpoint or an aesthetic standpoint. There are some modifications that are proposed under the development plan itself, and those include putting a trash enclosure in the rear, allowing an unpermitted storage shed to continue to remain in the front setback, and putting bicycle racks in the front setback along Camino Pascadero. And basically, just very quickly, we didn't think these really raised much in terms of issues. The existing building right now is within the rear setback, and the trash enclosure would simply be adjacent to it, so as a fact, they're both within the rear setback. The trash enclosure wouldn't intrude any further into the setback than the existing building. It's located toward the rear. It's not going to be visible from the street. We didn't think it was an issue. Storage set in the front setback exists. It's a small eight-foot-tall structure. It's partially screened. It's been there for some years, and doesn't seem to present any notable issues from an aesthetic standpoint. And the bike racks in the front setback are simply something that are, they're uncovered. It's simply not an allowed use. However, in order to encourage bicycle use, reduce vehicle travel, we did run this by the BAR. They found no objections. They recommended a few things in terms of screening, but they're very minor structures and don't present any issues as far as we're concerned. We did go through environmental review and found that there are, under Section 15303, that there are exemptions that would fit this, and they primarily fit into the categories of new construction and the conversion of small structures, which is really what we have here. There are some exterior modifications to the building that are being improved, but they're mostly for entryways and facades with some hardscape and landscape. There's the conversion of use that's taking place, but that's primarily limited to interior construction, partitions, that type of work, which is all minor. And then, as we mentioned, there are a few small accessory structures. And in combination, we found that there were no sensitive resources or historic resources or other values that would not allow us to apply this exemption for this particular Lastly, our recommendations, as we said, are as we think we can, we recommend supporting the modifications, supporting the project. We determined that it is exempt from CEQA. We've attached a notice of exemption to the staff report. We recommend that you approve the modifications proposed under the development plan. We recommend that you approve the modifications under the conditional use permit, which are all tied into the parking itself. And we also recommend that you approve the accompanying coastal development permit for the project. With that, I would can answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Very thorough as always. Commissioner Blau has a question.
Yeah, I'd like to know what the term and the conditions are of the lease with the college on the parking.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, there is a condition requiring the applicant to return with a formal lease. We have attached a copy of a, what I would say is a very generalized outline of some of the terms of the lease. That's included, but we found that the typical types of documents that we work with for those types of leases need to require more specifics in terms of the details and what would happen if parking isn't available, those kinds of things. So there is a condition requiring a final lease that would be reviewed by staff and by county council.
Well, is it a year-to-year lease? Is it a 20-year lease? Is it a 35-year lease? I think that's a simple question you can answer now.
Oh, I understand.
I don't care about the specific language. I want to know about the length of it.
The term of the lease is 30 years. And a copy of the one is attached into the staff report.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions from commissioners at this point? Commissioner Brown?
Thank you. This project goes before the Coastal Commission?
It would only go to the Coastal Commission if there was an appeal filed. Otherwise, the decision-maker will, the planning commission will be the decision-maker unless it's appealed to the board. If it's appealed to the board, then there may be an opportunity, depending on that decision, to appeal to the Coastal Commission.
Okay, thank you.
And Commissioner Brooks?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Bell, I'm just looking at the option to lease in our attachment E, and I see, yes, in fact, it is a 30-year lease, but I'm, in the next paragraph, it says that the parcel is within the 500 feet of the project parcel. So that would be adjusted, obviously.
That would need to be adjusted. That was based on some earlier calculations.
Okay, thank you.
Let's then look to the applicant for additional information. Ms. Plowman?
Morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name's Lisa Plowman. I'm representing the Student Housing Co-op. And actually, Alan's gonna go ahead and bring up our presentation. Just to start, I wanted to introduce the Executive Director of the Co-op, Jeff Besmer. Oh, thank you. All right. And he's gonna take a moment to just give you a little bit of background on the co-op and the purpose of the project that's before you today.
Good morning to the commission. My name is Jeff Besmer. I'm new to the Santa Barbara area. I worked in Madison, Wisconsin for the last four years with co-ops there. I actually had the pleasure of working with the planning commission for the last three years on co-op-related issues in Madison. Thank you to the commission for your thoughtful consideration of this project. Thank you to staff for your hard work, and thank you to all the members of the audience for coming to participate. The Santa Barbara Student Housing Cooperative has been around since 1976. We have one full-time and one part-time staff, so we have professional management. We have had it for at least a decade. As the slide shows, we were started by members of the University of California at Santa Barbara who came together to provide themselves a more affordable housing option in Isla Vista. We started leasing houses, but grew quickly in the 1980s to purchase our first property, and since then, we've acquired three more, so we have a total of four. Our mission is to provide affordable housing to university students, staff, and faculty. We are an alternative to traditional student housing. We have a very developed system. We run our organization as a cooperative. There are over 300 housing cooperatives in the United States, and we're pleased to be here in Santa Barbara. We have a developed labor system, so we organize our chores very well. We also have a service program in which members participate in the governance and administration of the whole organization, everything from being on our board of directors to handling the finances, to purchasing food, running maintenance, organizing events, and so on and so forth. So education is part of our values. Members learn about this throughout the process. We also have communal fruit purchasing and a very strong sense of community. You'll hear from some of our members in the public comments section as they talk about what the co-op has meant to them. So as I mentioned, we have four houses. We have our Newman House on Madrid Road, our Manly House on, in Barcadero, and we have two more, De Shane and Bico on Sabado Tarde en Sueño. The mission of the Merton House, which is before you, is cooperative interfaith housing. Some of our other houses have themes. Our Bico House is a people-of-color house, and our De Shane House is our vegetarian house. The cooperative interfaith housing mission was developed with the University Religious Center from whom we purchased the property. It was a really great pleasure to work with them, and we have very strong shared values. We had a great interfaith Thanksgiving dinner over this past holiday, but we really wanted to really underline our mission and how we save our members, all of our 75 members together, a total of $200,000 a year in savings on the rent. It makes attending a university much more affordable, and you'll hear some of that from our members as well. And our rates are about 70% of the prevailing rental rates in the Isla Vista area. We've been around for 35 years. We're a very stable organization. As I mentioned, we have professional management. Students stay one to four years. We have some students who've been there for five and six years right now. And we are really hoping to offer, in addition to this project, we're really hoping to offer a solution to the, what we see as the current parking problem provided by this building. And I would like to, with the permission of the commission, distribute letters of support from our neighbors and in addition to a letter from the university's housing department stating that they are guaranteeing 16 spots. That was before we had the conversation about that one spot, guaranteeing 16 spots in these lots. So with your permission, I'd like to. And I will pass it off to Lisa Plowman, who's representing us, and thank you all very much. Yep. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I want to thank Alan Bell for a very thorough presentation, and I'll try to minimize any duplication of information here. This just provides an elevation of the proposed upgrade to the facade of the current URC. You don't know where the project is located. As Alan went over briefly, the site's about .35 net acres. It's zoned for high-density residential for students. And in the IV plan, it's actually zoned for design, mixed residential design of 30 units per acre. And then the surrounding uses include a fraternity to the north, which has actually just been purchased by the RDA, a single-family home to the west, there are apartments to the south, and apartments and a church to the east. The University Religious Center has occupied this building since it was originally constructed, and that's been for about 40 years. And CUP was approved by the county in 1969, which included office use and an assembly room that would be used by nonprofit organizations for meetings. It also included various rooms, like a lounge, a kitchen, storage, bathrooms. At the time the CUP was approved, the county actually reduced the required parking from 42 spaces to 12 spaces. Just to give you a little bit of background about how the facility has been used, it's been used by the URC, and the co-op has actually had an office in that building for some time. And over the last few years, that meeting room has been used between 20 and 25 times a year, and those are various meetings for the communities. I know the county actually rents that room for various meetings that involve the RDA and other public-oriented meetings that draw people from the community. The site was purchased by the co-op in March of 2011 this year. This gives you some photos of the actual building, interior and exterior, and these are the surrounding buildings. One key element I think that I'd like to emphasize is that this project intends to provide affordable housing for students. 51% of the units or the spaces in the facility, roughly about 10 beds, would be affordable to low-income students. And the project has received $175,000 in CDBG funding from County HCD. It's been allocated to the project. I think, as everyone knows, and we listen to the news, the cost of education is going up and up and up and making it less affordable for people to attend college, pay their tuition, pay their rent, pay for books. And so this gives a very needed, fills a very important role in the community, and it's greatly needed by the students that are attending UCSB. The new cooperative house has 12 bedrooms, and there's been a voluntary cap of 18 residents, and that was part of a negotiation with one of the residents or business owners in the community, Craig Guyer, who's here today. The 12 onsite parking spaces are provided, 15 offsite, as we've discussed. We've got 24 bike parking spaces. 12 of those are covered, 12 are uncovered. And the meeting room would be used by the co-op employees, as indicated by Mr. Bell. And then there's a maximum of two to six meetings per year that would be in that room. So it was a question I know from some of the commissioners about how often the room would be used and who that would draw from the community and what kind of impact that would have. So two times a year, the co-op actually has meetings for the membership. And as Jeff indicated, there's about 75 members. They live in Isla Vista. They... They walk or ride their bikes to these meetings. And then, two to four times a year, there would be potluck dinners, you know, so that a resident could invite a guest over and have a potluck dinner. That room really is used in a similar way as you would see like a fraternity or sorority use their communal rooms, where they might have a guest over or something like that. The project also includes improving the landscaping on the site, an overall building upgrade, and improving the handicap access to the facility. So this just gives you a, does this pointer work, Alan? Do you know? Yes, it does. Okay, great. This, Alan showed you the site plan, but this is a landscape plan and site plan. This is Camino Pescadero here, and then the private drive that provides access to the existing lot. There are two parking spaces already in the front yard setback, located right here in this corner. The enclosed bike parking would be located here at the back of the building. This is the trash enclosure that would be located in the rear setback attached to the existing building. You can see from the landscape plan the areas where the upgraded landscaping would occur. We've got the 12 bike parking, uncovered bike spots in the front yard setback here, and then this is the area where the improved handicap access would occur. Here's some elevations that depict how the facades would be improved, and this just shows the location of the trash enclosure and then the bike lockers. Alan spent a good deal of time going over the parking modification. I don't want to spend a tremendous amount of time on it, but I think what's important to note is that the students that live in these facilities generally do not own cars. The majority do not own cars. And that's based on a two-year study of three of the homes that are owned and operated by the Co-op. In 2009, the maximum number of students in one of the homes was 46% that owned a car. And that's been on the decline, as you can see from this table, over time, less and less students are owning cars. So based on the analysis that we've done, we anticipate that there would not be a demand of more than 10 spaces, actually, for this facility, and that the provision of the off-site spaces through UCSB really is a security. And it provides a long-term storage opportunity for vehicles, but we don't even anticipate actually using them or purchasing any of those parking permits from the university. But we understand the concern of the community and the concern of the Commission and staff in having that available because of the current parking situation in Isla Vista and the demand for onsite, I'm sorry, the demand for on-street parking is fairly high and is very crowded. There we go. So as Alan said, we have the agreement with UCSB to have parking provided at the San Clemente Parking Facilities, both the open lot and the covered parking. And I agree with Alan that it's really an ideal spot for long-term storage for vehicles, for students who bring their car to campus to maybe get home once a quarter, but don't often use it when they're living in Isla Vista. The requested modification, as Alan pointed out, has to do with the distance from the proposed project site. We exceed the 500 feet, and in, under the master plan for Isla Vista, it's 1,000 feet, but we even exceed that in one case, although I think it's, it's an acceptable distance, given the long-term nature of that parking. In addition, the Co-op is willing to restrict car ownership for its leaseholders, and has included that in the proposal and has submitted something to Alan for a condition that could be added to the project. This graphic just depicts the location of the project site and the location of the lots and the distances. So the applicant is willing to deed restrict the property and restrict total ownership of vehicles to 11 for the students. We don't anticipate that there'll be a demand for 11, but they're willing to restrict that and record a restriction prior to the occupancy. In addition, in the lease agreement, they'll be adding the parking and vehicle ownership restrictions. They'll be identifying the available alternative modes of transportation that are available in the community, with either a bus, or a bicycle, or walking. And then the terms of the prohibition would be outlined in that lease as well for anybody who signed it, explaining that the duration of the prohibition is for the length of the lease, and that there'll be a $100 fine, a minimum of $100 fine for each violation of that prohibition. I wanted to point out that, you know, this is an affordable housing project, and traditionally affordable housing projects seek concessions or modifications to development standards. And one of those key concessions is parking. As you'll, as you found, actually, in reviewing the Isla Vista projects that have already been approved by this body, parking is very difficult to provide, particularly in this environment where the sites are extremely constrained. And then when you're providing affordable housing, the cost of the land creates difficulties in making sure that you can meet every single standard on the property, or that applies to the property. And in the housing element, there are incentives for reducing parking for affordable housing projects. I wanted to discuss a little bit about the precedent for parking modifications in Isla Vista. This body has reviewed and approved two projects in downtown Isla Vista, the Icon Project and the Loop Project, and in both instances, the parking requirements were modified. The, under the Icon Project, 72 spaces were required, only 34 are provided, and actually 18 of those are onsite and the rest are provided offsite. So not only did this project seek a parking, overall parking reduction in terms of the total spaces provided, but they also provided a portion of those offsite. Similar thing happened with the Loop Project. 99 spaces were required by the code. They're only providing 54, 24 of which are provided onsite, so less than half are actually provided onsite. So the difference between these projects are that this project is actually meeting the standard. It's actually providing the 27 spaces through both onsite and offsite parking. The other thing I wanted to point out is that you have a current use in that building. It's been operated by the URC for the last 40 years. The office space, under the current code, requires 26 spaces on the site. You've got 12. So there's a demand there that exists that isn't currently being met onsite. And then the use of the meeting room is substantially more than would be under the Co-op's ownership, so that there are more people coming to this facility for public meetings than you would see under the Co-op. In fact, the Co-op will not even make this room available for public meetings. So in a, in a manner of speaking, this project actually addresses a current parking shortage that has occurred with the URC office use and meeting room use. This is actually just a quote from one of the staff reports that was prepared by staff for the Icon and Loop Projects, but it basically points out that Ivy is different than other communities. It is a place where alternative transportation is a way of life. I went to college there. I don't think I drove my car more than once or twice a quarter, maybe to the market, but I rode my bike everywhere I went. And I think that's demonstrated in this quote, and if you go out to Isla Vista, you'll see that, where people are skateboarding, they're walking, they're riding bicycles to get back and forth between Isla Vista and the campus. I did want to point out that the Co-op did extensive work to try to find parking within 500 feet of the site. They, they worked with, show the lot across the street, which you can see is number one here. There's actually a pending development on that site, and so the landowner was not willing to tie up the parking for any great length of period of time. They looked at Friendship Manor, but the Friendship Manor lot, there's a potential pending sale there, so they weren't interested in providing long-term parking. They looked at the lot directly west of them that is off that private drive. In addition, they're looking at a pending sale. And then we looked at a lot over in this area, and it actually was, while vacant, was just too small to be able to provide the parking on that particular site. So additional modifications, as Alan went over, they're proposing to attach an enclosed trash structure at the rear of the building. It's attached to the building. It doesn't extend any further into the rear yard step and, step back than the existing building does. It's actually the only real viable location for the trash. Originally, the trash had been proposed up in this corner, which seemed like the most logical, but that happens to be within a private easement, and you're not allowed to put any structures within that particular area. So Alan, we mentioned that we have the proposed parking space in the front yard, which is, there are already two additional spaces that are within that front yard, but that area is fairly well screened from the landscaping that either exists and that will be added. The shed is currently located in this area, and they're just seeking to relocate it and maintain it in that front yard setback. That's also screened from view. And then also providing the front, in the front yard, the proposed bike racks, which are small in nature and actually seen all over Isla Vista. And we had a discussion with the BAR about it, and they were supportive of placing the bike racks in the front, because it was really part of the culture of Isla Vista, and they felt that having the racks in the front would facilitate students using those racks and being able to use their bikes more readily. I just want to take a minute to go over some of the county policies that this project actually helps to fulfill. The housing element includes a policy that talks about promoting new housing opportunities and revitalizing existing housing to meet all economic segments of the community, including extremely low-income households. There are programs under that particular policy that talk about working with the RDA, catalyzing community renewal through affordable housing in Isla Vista, and contributing to the diversity and affordability of housing stock in that community. Program 1.13 also talks about the Ivy Master Plan and trying to use redevelopment funds or other sources of funding to help develop varied housing types in the community to meet the full spectrum of needs that exist in that community, which range from market to very low income, and that includes the students that attend that university. It also fulfills policy objectives that are in the Ivy Master Plan. One of the, the housing goal in the Master Plan is to produce new housing to all, for all sectors of the community, including the families, the students, the workers, and improve the existing housing stock through creative public and private partnerships. Under that goal, there are two policies that talk about the provision of affordable housing. The county would like to see that 50% of the total new residential development in Ivy is priced at an affordable range. This project meets that goal. And lastly, the Housing Policy 5 talks about improving the quality and character of the existing residential buildings. And this project actually returns a building to a residential use, which it is planned for both in Article 2 and in the Ivy Master Plan. So just in conclusion, I wanted to talk about some of the benefits, and I've mentioned them already in my presentation, but just reiterate the benefits that we think this project has for the community. It's providing affordable housing for students in a time where education costs are going up and up and up, and resources are being reduced. It provides a critical resource for these students to be able to continue their education, which we, I'm sure, all believe is important in our community. It fulfills the vision of the Master Plan. It rehabilitates an existing building, returns it to housing. The enhancements to the facade will enhance the neighborhood. As I mentioned, it returns the structure to a residential use, resolves the current URC parking shortage. So if this project is not approved, it will return to an office use. It will return to the high level of meeting use in the assembly room, and those current parking shortages will remain in the community. And then it also, lastly, fulfills those housing element objectives of trying to provide more affordable housing in our community. So we're requesting that the Planning Commission approve the modifications, the CUP, the Development Plan, and the Coastal Development Permit to allow this important project to move forward. And with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners have questions at this point?
I have one, Ms. Plowman. There's a little discrepancy, I think, between the project description set forth in the staff report and what you've described as the use of the meeting room.
Mm-hmm.
It's a concern because of the parking issues-
Sure.
-and, and not because of the busyness or, or industry it promises to bring. But it appears to say in the staff report that the meeting room can be used by nonprofits, wouldn't be rented, but it, it would be available. And I can imagine, given the, the need for, for meeting room space in Isla Vista, there will be pressure on the Co-op to make it available for all sorts of meetings. There, there's no shortage of nonprofits in the university community. So what you suggested is, is more tailored to the use of the residents themselves, and, and there's a big gap in my mind as to the potential use, which could get up into the two, three times a month range, and what the residents might use it for in terms of occasional potlucks, or their, their two meetings a year.
Sure.
Do you want to-
Yeah, Mr. Chair. I think perhaps the phrase in the staff report relates to how it's stated in the, in the code, where you require a conditional use, a minor conditional use permit for an assembly room for nonprofits. I think that's maybe where the discrepancy is, but the Co-op only intends to use this facility for their activities. And we're willing to put that in the conditional use permit, that those meetings will be limited to that, and they won't be provided for other nonprofits to use the facility, because of the sensitivity about the parking issue. And there are other facilities in Isla Vista that you can rent. I think Hillel has a meeting room that you can rent, and there are other churches where you can rent facilities. But I, I understand there's a tension there, but I think in order to make this project a viable project and ensure that the Commission is comfortable with the restrictions, I think the Co-op is planning to place that restriction on themselves, and are willing to have that in the CUP.
All right. I personally would encourage staff to, to draft some language that limits the use of the meeting room more specifically than now, but I absolutely understand the position you're putting forth and, and appreciate it. Commissioner Blau?
Well, that just raises a question. If, if they're not using it for anything outside the, their own residence, then do they even need a minor conditional use permit? It seems to me if we change the description, we can eliminate that process. It eliminates an expense to them, and I think it solves your concern, and I have the same concern.
We still, one of the proposed uses is a collective meeting space for all of the Co-op, so go beyond the residence of just this space and-
That's right.
I see Ms. Black nodding.
Answers the question, then. They do need it, then, yeah.
I think so. Anything else? Commissioner Brooks?
Yes, I'm looking at the conditions of approval. I think it's the same one that Chair Cooney looked at. I think by eliminating, because what you're describing now is different from this paragraph that says the meeting room is for nonprofit organizations, but then, and then you go on to say, and will not be used or rented to non-SBSHC. It seems to me that you, if we just take out that nonprofit organizations, that clears it up, because that, then it definitely limits it to your own usage.
Yeah, that sounds fine.
Okay, anything else from Commissioners before we hear from the public? Don't see any, so we'll turn to our public speakers now. We have eight speaker slips. I think we can allow the, the full three minutes, but we would like to limit comments to three minutes. If you've heard your position stated by others, you can shorten your presentation slightly by referring to those. It would be appreciated. The first speaker is William Radus, and the second is Natasha Joyce Widener. If Natasha would get close to moving up, that would be great.
Good morning.
Good morning. Hi, I'm William Radus. I've lived in the Co-op for two years. I was planning to live in the Merton House on the original track. And just, the Co-op, for me, is, it's more than just a living space. It's a community, like, when you move in, you really are adopted by this community of people, and they're also, like, loving, and it's, it's, it's a really awesome community. And it's a great place to grow and learn for students, too. Everybody's so active in the college community and beyond, that it's, you learn a lot, too. And I'm also on the Board of Directors there, and I've really learned a lot being on the Board about the cooperative system and working with the community to make solutions possible, and making the best, best situation for everybody, and, like, working with the community as a whole. And, yeah, also, I found with the car issues, when I first moved into the Co-op's, I had a car, but I found that it was, ended up being a burden, and it was, ended up being really costly to me, and I didn't need it at all. Biking is really accessible, like, everywhere in Isla Vista or on campus. You You can bike, too, and I feel like in the co-op, too, there's really a bike culture, like very, everybody's really into their bikes. Like personally, I have three bikes. Yeah, it's, it's definitely a very, there's not much need of a car.
Could I ask you a question, Mr. Radus?
Yeah.
You say you're on the Board of Directors. Is the Board of Directors, is its jurisdiction all of the residences, not just the Merton House?
Yes, for the five, well, the four houses currently, and then once the new house comes, the Merton House, it'll be for all five.
And how many people constitute the Board of Directors?
There's seven members, I believe, and then two community, or one, one community member.
Yeah, and, and all are students or besides the community member?
Yeah, besides the community member, all are students and members of the organization.
Great. Thank you very much.
I had one question also. You mentioned you had three bikes. One of the things that concerns me about this plan is the fact there's a 12-bike barns, I would call them, and then another 12 that are on the front, did I get that correct? Is that adequate, or does it really need like 18 barns for your bikes? I mean, I'm just concerned about storage of the bikes. Isn't that a problem for you, where they're not covered and somewhat protected?
Currently, I love my bikes so much that I keep one in my room, and I actually only keep one in the rack, and the other one is just, I only use it very occasionally, so I don't even have it in the rack, it's in my room, too, so.
Okay, thanks.
Natasha will be followed by Brian, Brian Granger.
Good morning. My name is Natasha Weidner. I've been a proud member-owner of the Santa Barbara Student Housing Co-op for the past three years. I do not own a car, and I'm here this morning during my finals week to encourage you to approve our project so that more students can have the enriching, educational, affordable living experience in Isla Vista that I've had the pleasure to enjoy in the Student Housing Co-op. I moved in my first year at UCSB because I couldn't afford, my family couldn't afford the on-campus housing prices, and the co-op actually costs less than half of what the on-campus housing costs. So I moved in because it was affordable, and I've stayed with it because it's an incredible community. It provides a hub for culture in Isla Vista. I've been exposed to so much art and performances and active democratic meeting structure. I've had the pleasure of traveling to national conferences with other cooperatives to learn more about democracy and sharing and cooperation, and it's been an incredibly educational experience. I live with 16 other people, and I think only about six of them have cars, and we don't even use a car to go to the grocery store. We have a little shopping cart that we push down the street to the food co-op, and we get everything we need. And there's, as Willie said, a culture in the co-op of trying to reduce our impact on the environment, trying to reduce our use of fossil fuels, and that's another reason why we bike everywhere. And I consider the co-op's actually a sanctuary in the middle of kind of craziness in Isla Vista, and so I'd like to encourage you to support this project and allow another sanctuary and cultural resource to blossom here. Thank you.
Thank you very much, particularly during finals, but get back to work. Brian Granger, followed by Devlin Seymour.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Living in the co-op's allows student, students, excuse me, like myself, to survive in this area and complete our studies without undue hardship. I am a doctoral candidate at UCSB and member of the co-op's, and for a month and a half of this past summer, I was actually homeless in Ivy because I am not funded through the summers through my program, and I was unable to earn enough to stay in my apartment. Sadly, I join many other students who are actually similarly under-resourced, and I can't express how hard it is to maintain the level of scholarship that I must maintain while also worrying about how I'm going to properly feed myself and where I'm going to sleep. But in the fall, I joined the co-op's, and living in the co-op's has been a great blessing to me, but more students deserve this same life-sustaining opportunity, so I see the addition of Merton House as an imperative. Also, Merton House as a living space for students where interfaith discussion and exchange can take place doesn't just satisfy the interests of the handful of students who wish to live there, but in fact addresses a much larger community need for initiatives that bring people of diverse backgrounds and beliefs together in a spirit of peace and creative collaboration. Our nation's president has issued an interfaith challenge for communities to engage in partnership, and for verification of that, you can consult the website www.wighthouse.gov. And this challenge has been taken up by UCSB's own Associated Students Community Affairs Board. Merton House is clearly a respectable effort to meet this challenge. I know because I am also a member of the Episcopal Diocese of Los Angeles's Standing Committee on Campus Ministry for the Santa Barbara and Ventura Region. And while I am obviously not here before you as an official representative of the diocese, it's my experience as a member of the Episcopal Diocese that leads me to make the assertion that the co-op in general and the Merton House in particular has wide-ranging support from voting, tax-paying, community members of many age groups, from churches as far south as Malibu to as far north as Lompoc. Many people, including our president and the UCSB, are committed to progressive interfaith dialogue, and Merton House is a very public way to begin that discussion. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming, Mr. Granger. Mr. Seymour will be followed by Devon McLennan.
Thank you, Chairman, fellow commissioners. I have been a member of the Student Housing Co-op for four years, and before that, I was living in the Isla Vista community. I felt alienated by the Isla Vista community and the current atmosphere that exists there, and the co-op's have been a real, like, ability for me to actually succeed where I want with my academics when I moved into them. And I'm currently a staff member of the university, and they allow me to bike to work on a very easy basis and get there without having to use a car. The car use in the, in the Santa Barbara Student Housing Co-op is much less than even what is regular in Ivy. We have communal shopping and communal food bought, so we have that reduced car use. Everyone there rides their bike to class or walks to class, no one drives there at all. I would say that, having lived in three of the four houses currently, at no point have I ever had more than 40% of our house members having cars. It's always less than that. We have a, like, strong incidence of carpooling to different parts of the state when we go home. Members almost have no need for that. We have a communal listserv email, and we send out updates of, oh, I'm driving up to San Francisco, I'm driving to Sacramento, does anyone need a ride? We have a strong community that's been built within the co-op's, and I think that community allows us to have very little use of cars. And I feel this project is a great exemplary project for how we can build community within the Isla Vista area and allow for support of an alternative view from what is the usual Ivy atmosphere. Thank you.
Thank you. Devon McLennan, followed by Craig Guyer.
My name is Devon McLennan, and I am here to express my very strong support for the Santa Barbara Student Housing Cooperative's Merton House project, including the two variances requested. I am the trustee for the vacant lot at 765 Camino Pescadero, which is owned by my father, William McLennan. This vacant lot is accessed by the same private road or driveway as the Merton site. My family also owns the Berkshire Terrace Apartments, which are immediately adjacent to the vacant lot to the west. The property at 777 Camino Pescadero had been underutilized by its prior owners and had fallen into some disrepair. I'm pleased that the Housing Cooperative has acquired the property, and I enthusiastically support their plans for renovation of the building and for the installation of new hardscaping and landscaping. I anticipate that it will result in significant improvements, which can only benefit all of the nearby properties. After much discussion with the Housing Co-op, I also support the parking variance that they've requested. Parking is certainly a huge issue in the neighborhood, as in the rest of Ivy. However, given the unique attributes of the Housing Cooperative, it would seem to me appropriate to grant them some leeway. As a result of the members' commitment to cooperative living and the other shared values, they voluntarily placed limits on the number of residents who may own cars. This in itself is a benefit to the surrounding properties. The residents of the proposed Merton House will surely be less of a contributor to local traffic and local parking woes than the residents of any of the other surrounding properties. Additionally, having some of their parking spots off-site will reduce traffic on our shared access road. And most importantly, I'm convinced that their agreement with UCSB for parking in the lots across El Callejo will be more than adequate for their needs. If anyone in Isla Vista merits serious consideration for a parking variance, surely it would be this group. I would like to take note of the Housing Cooperative's commitment to fostering community. It has already had a positive effect on our neighborhood by organizing and hosting meetings to plan for much-needed improvement and maintenance of the shared access road. To my knowledge, this has never been done in the history of the shared access road, certainly not within the last two decades. I cannot imagine any group of people who would make better neighbors. I hope you will vote to approve the project as stated, including the two variances that they have requested. Thank you.
I think the Cooperative is fortunate to have a good neighbor as well. Good morning, Mr. Guyer.
Morning, Commissioners. My name is Craig Guyer. First, a couple of things have come up that I want to make a comment to. The first is the co-op's parking study. I own a, I've owned a building next door to the co-op on Madrid for, I'm going to say, about 25, 26 years. I must be the only one that has a problem, because I tow one of their cars out of my lot every month, at least one, so I kind of question that. The other thing I'd like to remind the commission is that the Isla Vista Master Plan, after all these years, still is not approved by the Coastal Commission. I think my opposition is not to the co-op and is not to the project per se, it's parking. I think what's missing from the commission's packet is Special Condition 14 that was placed on the San Clemente project by the Coastal Commission. I was pretty, I was very integral in working that. That condition, let me read a little bit from it. 14A1 states that all 976 spaces shall be restricted to San Clemente residents, staff, and visitors. That's a condition that's put on, placed on by the Coastal Commission on that project. And now you're being asked to approve parking from another project? The monitoring program, that was an integral part of this Condition 14. And reading from the most recent monitoring that was sent to the Coastal Commission, this monitoring program will not be completed until the second week of April 2012, and then it has to be approved by the Coastal Commission. So no matter what, all the blah, blah, blah that talks about excess parking, and it may well have it. Some of the preliminary indications by the monitoring program clearly shows that they probably will have some excess parking. But there's conditions that are on that project that don't allow it to give parking to someone else, and that seems to be neglected here. The community at that time, the redevelopment agency at that time, the county at that time, fought very hard for that project, San Clemente project, to have adequate parking and restrict the parking. The parking's restricted, they can't charge extra, the rent is included in their, the rent for the parking. So they don't have excess parking yet. They may well have it next year, but to ask you to approve that now, that's a disservice to the community. I think the project is a worthy project, the co-op does a good job with what they do. It's the parking. You saw projects that have been approved that have less than required parking. How many times are we going to do this? In their own parking study that the university did, segmenting Isla Vista into three segments, that, that area has a 90 to 92% use of on-street parking. You can't just keep approving projects that don't have parking. I agree that in the bulk of the instances, kids bring cars, a lot of them do. It's probably 80% of the kids use cars. They don't drive them every day. So parking, satellite parking, that's something that should be done. Bicycle, yeah, bicycle's the best way to get around here. You've been out there, try to drive around with a car, with all the bicycles. Try to go down part all road with the bicycles, you can't do it. Try to find a parking place. You guys were lucky when you went on an onsite thing, the building is empty, otherwise you would have never found a parking spot there. My issue is UCSB does not, at this time, have excess parking. There's restrictions on that San Clemente project placed by the Coastal Commission? I don't see how you or anybody else can ignore it. Until those restrictions are lifted, they don't have excess parking. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Guyer. Our next speaker is...
Mr. Chair, I just have a question, if I may?
Yes, Mr. Guyer, a few, Mr. Guyer, Commissioner Brown has a question for you.
In, you related that Condition 14 requires or states about the 976 spaces can't be, that's what goes with the project, and they can't be rented leased to anybody else, but the garage, is what I understand, has over, has 1,003 spaces or some such number.
The parking requirement includes both the surface lot on the west end and that structure.
Right, so those, that's the combined number of 1,003.
But, but the problem with it is, if they reach 97% usage of those two spots, they have to build additional parking spaces. They have to come back with a new program to the Coastal Commission. So really to say that they've overbuilt and built 26 or 27 extra spaces, that's not really true. Until that parking monitoring program is certified by the Coastal Commission, they don't have excess parking. And they didn't build excess parking because if they reach that point of 97% use of the built spaces, they then have to provide additional parking. That's why it's overbuilt. It wasn't overbuilt just because they wanted to overbuild it, let me tell you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guyer. Our last speaker slip is for Ken Warfield. If there's anyone else that would like to address the commission, please fill out a speaker slip and get it to Commissioner Brown.
Chair Cooney, esteemed board, I, my name is Ken Warfield, and I'm the current PAC Chair for the RDA in Ivy, and we never approved this project when we saw it. In fact, we were never presented with the density or the parking deficiencies. So I want to make it crystal clear that the PAC is not endorsing this. Now, I'm, to change gears, I'd like to speak as a private citizen. The two projects, the ICOT and the Loop, that are going forward as part of the redevelopment process, there's a big difference, and Ms. Plowman, I think, misstated it. The distinction is, they're taxpayers. The co-op doesn't pay taxes. Therefore, they can provide inexpensive housing for their students. But to ask a community to be burdened with over-parking, over-card organizations that don't even pay taxes is a little bit strange, in my view. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Warfield. Benjamin Kotay?
That's correct, thank you. Benjamin Kotay, it's nice to be here. I am a member of the Student Housing Cooperative, and I also am a graduate student at UCSB. My first year, I spent living in the San Clemente residential complex, and I must say, I drove a lot living there as opposed to living in the co-op's where now my car just sits, and I'm actually thinking about getting rid of it. But I, in my... with friends, and parking in the parking structure, I think there was not a single time where I went back and the top two or three floors of the parking structure were not empty. So any concerns about the amount of parking available in that structure, someone definitely has not been going and checking it out. It's very, very empty. So that's what I wanted to clarify. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kotay. Thanks for helping us. Ms. Plowman, would you like a few minutes to respond to the testimony you've heard from the public?
Mr. Chair, thank you. I think Graham Lyons, the attorney for the Co-op, is going to offer some information as well. But the fact of the matter is that we have an agreement from UCSB that says they are allowed to sell us parking permits for 16 spaces. Parking garage and the parking lot have been constructed in a manner that allows excess spaces. If the university does reach, as Mr. Guyer indicates, a certain percentage of occupancy, then indeed, if that's a condition, they will be forced to build some additional facilities. But they are willing and able to provide us those parking permits, and it's not in violation of their conditions of approval from the Coastal Commission. In addition to that, they've also reported to us that it's 60% capacity. The university does monitor that. The timing of their monitoring reporting to the Coastal Commission is something we're not aware of, but they have been monitoring it, and they have reported that to us. And so we're on, I don't see that there's a particular issue here. I know Mr. Guyer feels that there's an issue, but we have an agreement. They have the additional parking that's available, and they're well below capacity. Graham, do you have anything you want to add, or Jeff?
Yeah. I'd also like to respond to a couple of other concerns. The Project Area Committee did not provide a formal recommendation, but they did vote unanimously in support of this project, as we presented at a previous hearing before the Commission. So, and in addition to the property tax concern, we do, we do actually pay property taxes. We don't pay the full amount, but I just wrote the checks last week, so, thank you.
Okay. Anything else? We, we had one late addition to our speakers list. It's a little hard to read the first name, but I'll, I'll say Mr. McCallum.
Hello. I've lived in the Santa Barbara Student Housing Co-op for the last four years, and I guess the only two issues I really wanted to address was, first, whether or not, I don't think that we've ever had any of our students towed out of Mr. Guyer's lots. And secondly, I wonder where the 80% of students owning cars comes from. But I started off living downtown, and that was too expensive. And so I actually moved into Isla Vista. And in addition to not having to pay, in addition to paying, I think, less than 50% rent that you find in other places in Isla Vista, there's also opportunities to work for the Cooperative, which drastically reduce your rent. Without the student, without the Santa Barbara Student Housing Cooperative, I wouldn't be able to be in attendance at school here. And so I wish I could state that more powerfully and really make it clear, just like how meaningful this organization is and the kind of unique opportunity it provides. Thank you.
Thank you for coming up. Okay, that concludes the public hearing, and we'll come back to staff for responses. And Mr. Bell, you've heard the indication of concern about Coastal Commission condition. Do you have a response to that?
We examined this issue, and we considered the modification request in the off-site parking. And there were several factors that we considered and felt that this was appropriate for. One is, there is an agreement that requires the 976 spaces. The university has informed us in the lease that, in fact, the parking was overbuilt. There are 1,003 spaces. So that leaves an excess of 37 spaces. The Co-op is asking for 15. That clearly falls within the parameters. Now, should the parking increase dramatically, I think the figures we've heard today is that the surveys over the past couple of years have shown that the parking is at about 60% or 65%. If it goes up dramatically, the university, upon entering into this lease, would have to take corrective actions. But we don't see that with that excess capacity, that we're cutting into the Commission's conditions, per se. So it really didn't, in that case, influence us to find that the off-site parking would be inappropriate. And the fact that the university has drafted at least a preliminary lease showing they would provide the spaces gave us that level of comfort over the 30-year period that the lease would be in effect for.
Commissioner Brown.
Thank you. So what would be the case if the university found itself in a situation where it was, in order to fulfill its own requirements, that it was not able to provide this organization with the lease anymore? How would that affect the project?
Well, there would have to be an alteration. I mean, obviously, they have a lease agreement, so that lease agreement would have to be dealt with. And then that would affect the conditions of approval for this project. So an alternative would have to be worked out in order for the project to continue.
Right. And there's a monitoring program set in place over the course of time, 15 years from now, 20 years from now, that would allow you to go back and look? I mean, is there something done on a yearly basis that allows you to reconcile whether or not the university is where it is in terms of this lease vis-a-vis this project?
Well, projects like this typically have a permit compliance component to them, so that could be part of the tracking of that effort. The conditions themselves, as I recall, don't require, say, an annual report or annual verification of the lease itself. But if that's something that you feel is appropriate, there are a few other changes we're going to be making to these conditions, we can certainly give that consideration.
So today, you, you can, based upon the conditions, say that it's satisfactory for this applicant to have this off-site parking, but in 10 or 15 years, you couldn't, you couldn't make that statement unless you have some sort of monitoring program that carries forth over this period of time. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Actually, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brown, I would state that somewhat differently. I mean, if they enter into a 30-year lease, which is what they would need to do before we cleared the condition, we would assume that 30-year lease is in effect for the entire 30-year period. And if the university decided that they needed these particular spaces to meet their own needs, they would need to make an arrangement with this applicant to either, to meet the conditions of the lease in a different way. So I don't, I don't think the university can just exit a long-term lease at their whim.
Mr. Chairman, one other point I misspoke. It's been some time since we put these conditions together. But actually, in the conditions for the lease, it does require the Co-op to annually report on the status of the lease. So that would be the trigger and the monitoring mechanism we would use. If for some reason, we receive that annual report and there's been a change, then we would then be prompted to take. And that's on page B-6. It's Condition 10, and it's under the monitoring component. And specifically, it says, "Proof of continued existence of the above referenced agreement/lease shall be submitted to PND Compliance Monitoring Staff on a yearly basis, no later than January of each year."
Commissioner Blau.
In reading the option to lease, as I read the option to lease, there's no requirement for the Merton House to actually lease any of the parking sites. In fact, they have an option every year for the 30-year period to lease 0 to 16, depending upon their need. Now, having said that, I'm more concerned that we have a deed restriction in the property that limits the number of residents that can have an automobile within Isla Vista. I'm not sure that it's adequate the way that it was shown up on the screen by the applicant, because my concern is, we've had this discussion before, talking about Isla Vista, where, yeah, they don't park their car, any of the 11 or 12 spaces onsite, but they have a car that they use once or twice a year, and it's parked out someplace in the community. We've also talked about, well, we could check to see if they own a car. Well, maybe Mom and Dad own the car, so how do you check that? So I guess we have to have a little faith in the operations of the Merton House. But for me, I think the issue of leasing parking from the college is of no value to me. I don't think they intend to lease them based on the fact that they've demonstrated that their students don't have cars. I mean, in the other houses that they're managing, they have less than 50% of the students that have cars. So why would they lease cars if they've got 12 spaces and 18 students in their project? So it's more important that we change the conditions, at least to me, that there is a deed restriction, that it be deed restricted to no more than 11 or 12 of the students have, have a car. And I say 11 or 12 because you have one handicap parking space, so what happens if we don't have a student that has the placard? He can't use that space without getting a fine. So I'm more inclined to actually do a deed restriction of 10 parking spaces, plus one for the handicap. If you have one that qualifies, you'd have the 11th student that could use one. And just, I know we're not in deliberations yet, but I'll just bring up another issue. Maybe staff could address it. I'd be more inclined to allow them to have 11 parking spaces, eliminate one, and put in another six bike barns, I guess you call them, or bike closets. I'm convinced by the testimony here today that every one of these students will have a bike. I think it's more important that we provide adequate protection for the bike than we do a parking space. I think you could do it on the side of the house, where you have the one parking space in the setback. I think you could put a bike barn or rack on that side of the house as well. But like I say, the lease, I think, is of not much value. I don't think you're going to use it. Maybe it's nice to have it so that it could be enforced by us later on. But even that, I think we need to change it to say that if the county determines at some point in the future that, that you're not leasing enough spaces from the college, that we could force you to do that. But the way it reads right now, it doesn't. I think you have the option to do it, as it says, there are 0 to 16 spaces is what I read, but there's no absolute requirement for them to do that. Again, I don't think you need to. I mean, you've demonstrated by the way you operate the building that you're probably going to have students that are going to use bicycles, they're not going to use cars. I understand that. And that makes sense to me. If you've got a subsidized or a low-cost housing unit, certainly you wouldn't want a car. You're right, they're very expensive. I think it'd be the first thing I'd give my five as a student. So having said that, I'd like to see those changes in the conditions, and then I could very enthusiastically support the project.
Let me make sure I have your, your conditions. So I heard bike barn for an additional six bicycles?
Yeah, so there'd be one per resident in there, yes.
How about?
I still think you need the bike racks in the front, because those are going to be the guests of students that are there. That's where they're going to park, or other people that would be using it. And some of the students may use the open-space ones occasionally, but I like to give them a secure, covered, weatherproof enclosure. I think that's important. And I would, I would reduce their parking from 12 onsite to 11. And I would have the requirement that it be 10 restricted students with car, plus one handicap. The idea being is, if you don't have a handicap student, you at least have a handicap space for a guest or an invitee. And I think you do need to do that. If you have a student with a handicap, then he gets to use that space, and the invitee can find some other space to do it with.
Okay. I just want to get them so the rest of the Commission understands what, what your suggestions are. The, I heard require the lease of additional spaces if there's a determination by staff that, that there are vehicles in excess of what are parked onsite.
Right. And I think what would trigger that, by example, let's say that Mr. Guyer, for example, toes off two or three vehicles that we have later identified that belong to a student within this project. That's when we're going to enforce the provision that you lease from the college, and you get that student to park his vehicle someplace else. No complaint, no problem. I don't think it's an issue.
Okay. Commissioner Brown.
Mr. Chair, I think Ms. Black's about ready to say something, and then I'll chime in here.
Well, Mr. Chair, I was going to suggest that Alan review the parking requirements one more time and review why we've structured them the way they are, because we're not just talking about residential parking, we're also talking about parking for the meeting space. And I believe our intention was that the spaces at the university, the permits at the university be acquired, not that they just have the ability to acquire them, but that they actually be acquired.
If you do that, you need to change the way that, you can't refer to the lease in this, in this package, because the lease this package doesn't require them to lease the space. It only requires them to have an option to lease the space.
But I believe the conditions of approval do. And that's why I wanted Alan just to walk through it, because he's much more familiar.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, the way this is set up is the off-site parking is not an option, it's a requirement. And we say that for two points. One is, it's incorporated within the project description. So the project description talks about the fact that the project includes off-site parking spaces. When we get to the conditions of approval, we have a Condition of Approval 10 that actually requires the off-site parking to be provided in a lease that's in a form acceptable to staff and county council. We recognize that the current lease is not, at least the sample we were given, it has the basic information, but it's not tight enough, and it's not completely consistent with the condition. So with those provisions in mind, again, just to clarify, that the project will require the 15 off-site parking spaces. That is not an option.
Could the lease require that the, in addition to the parties, the county be notified in the event that lease is terminated for any reason?
Absolutely.
Commissioner Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to make sure on this Condition 10, I'm not quite reading it the way that I think that you're stating, because it just says that, that the required 16 off-site parking spaces shall be available. Now, that doesn't say that they got to go lease them. It just says they shall be available. And I would read from what is being said by the university as well, they have them available. So I think that, doesn't that language need to be tightened somewhat?
I think that's something we could certainly incorporate in and use your suggestion directly.
Okay. Right.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brown, I think the beginning part of Condition 10 makes it clear that the project shall include 16 spaces at the San Clemente housing project. I think the concern is, does the planned requirements and timing support that intention? And we'll look at that and clean it up if we need to.
And if I may, Mr. Chair, actually, my original question was something that Commissioner Blau had talked about in terms of additional bike parking. Did BAR, when they looked at this in terms of sort of the bike storage areas and the other outside storage, in the rear, is there room for additional storage, whether it be of bicycles or any other sort of things that sometimes you see when you drive around Isla Vista? You see people have all kinds of stuff. And I'm just wondering, you've got the proposed trash enclosure, but in the, let me see, in the rear, or I guess it's in the side yard, is there, is there sufficient room such that if they would need to have a designated storage area for something, that they would have that? Or could the BAR take a look at that when this, because I think BR only looked at this conceptually, right?
That's correct.
Okay. So perhaps the request would be for them to look at to make sure that there could be a designated storage area, whether it's expansion for bicycles, above and beyond what Commissioner Blau has requested, which I do support, or for some other, whatever they might need. And perhaps Ms. Plowman could address that as well.
Yeah, I would say, just from staff's perspective, I mean, we did just go by what the typical or the requirements were. And just to be clear, right now, there are 12 uncovered spaces in the front. Then there would be two separate lockers in the rear with a capacity of 12 bicycles. The site is pretty tight, but Lisa Plowman, the agent, may have some ideas in terms of, you know, whether there would be additional space to put in an additional locker for bicycles.
Well, I'm not, you know, while I'm interested in that, what I'm interested in is, when you drive around IV-
The site is pretty tight, but Lisa Plowman, the agent, may have some ideas in terms of, you know, whether there would be additional space to put in an additional locker for bicycles.
Well, I'm not, you know, while I'm interested in that, what I'm interested in is when you drive around Ivy, the complexes have just stuff. And I'm not asking that we convert a parking space, but there may be something on that site plan where you could designate a piece of the property where it's sort of opened to question of what it might be that could be designated, that the cooperative could, would realize, well, okay, we need to expand bicycle parking, we can do it here, or we can, motorcycles can park here, or who knows what. But just so that you have that ability, or you have that understanding of where it might go. So we don't have everything kind of spilling out everywhere.
Mr. Chair, can I?
Yeah, hold on just one second. I just want to, we're getting a little conversational back and forth, and I'd like to keep it a little more organized. So I want to hear from you, I want to hear from Commissioner Blau, and then we'll let Mr. Bell and staff respond to all the information we have. Ms. Plowman.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brown, and Commissioner Blau, I think the Co-op fully supports the notion of providing additional enclosed parking for the bicycles. And in fact, I'm intrigued by the proposal that Commissioner Blau made with respect to removing that parking space in the front yard setback and adding the lockers in that area, and the Co-op would be willing to do that. If the commission did not want to eliminate that space, then they can use the storage shed area for enclosed bike parking. But the rest of the site is very tight. And so we would have to allow for a modification of that front yard setback to allow enclosed bike parking to occur in that area. But we're happy to do it.
Commissioner Blau.
Yeah, and I think you could do it right in here, is what I was talking about. I don't care if it's here or here, but any one of those areas would be just fine to do that. I still would like to see the deed restriction on there, and I think for me at least, it gives me more comfort that we're violating the rule for being 500 feet for the off-site parking. I mean, we're 700 feet at best, we're actually 2,300 feet at most. So if it's deed restricted, it just gives me more comfort. And I'm also concerned about precedents, because we've seen that being a problem today when they talked about the Icon Project and the other one. And the reason I can justify doing it in this one is because we are doing low-cost housing. Yes, we make concessions on parking all the time for low-cost other kinds of projects. So I don't think we're setting a bad precedent by doing it. And by offsetting it with the deed restriction, I think we have, we will be consistent, we'll be able to do this in the future again if they bring us another project like this. It just kind of makes sense to me to do that. I'll tell you, at first blush, when I saw the reduced parking and over 500 feet, my inclination was to not support it. But after hearing the testimony from both the students and from the applicant, where we're doing something for lower-income students or people that can't afford the typical college costs, and the fact that I'm impressed by the fact they don't have automobile bills, I can make that concession. But if it is, so if it's deed restricted, it just makes sense to me. And the applicant's offering to do it. It's not like we're asking something to do that they're not willing to do. They made the offer to do that. So it just gives me great comfort.
Commissioner Brooks.
Yes, thank you. I have some concerns about giving up even that one parking space for the bicycles. And I'm thinking that, Ms. Plowman, I don't remember what was kept in the shed, but I know when we discussed other projects in Ivy, and we heard from, I think it was the gentleman this morning, you know, he sleeps with his bike. Many of the students will carry their bikes up to their rooms, take the wheels off or whatever. And I think, you know, if the parking is an issue with the neighbors, you know, to give up even one, you know, I would like us not to do that. I think if this extra bike storage could be, you know, facilitated in the shed, and I remember, you know, it's a good-sized shed, and I think you could probably fit dozens of bicycles in there, actually, you know, maybe a dozen, if they all had their own little spot, if it's like a bike locker. But I am concerned about giving up any parking spaces. I support, you know, the onsite, offsite, what we have going right now. But for the bike storage, I think we can accommodate that in other ways, if we have to do it as part of the conditions, that's fine. But I would like to keep that, I guess it's the 12 parking space.
Ms. Plowman.
I did have one question just about the, actually purchasing the permits. And my question is whether or not the condition could be written that the permits are purchased if there are students that need them, because it's an additional cost to the low-income operation at the Co-op. So I think they're happy, they'll buy them if they need to, but it's sort of like a belt and suspenders, if you will. If they don't have the cars, why should they be paying for the parking? And just as a correction, the meeting room actually does not have a parking requirement. It's generated by the bedrooms. And additional space in dining areas or kitchen or whatnot. But it operates just like any other dormitory in that particular area fraternity where they have, the room is used very rarely, but it is used a few times a year. So it's just something to consider, but they'll be willing to pay for those permits if the commission feels that that's important.
Okay. Well, the parking requirements, you know, we are disregarding them to a certain extent already, so we can't rely on them at other points. I think it's kind of a separate and unique consideration today, and we're crafting these requirements on the fly. Mr. Bell, you've now heard the comments of two Commissioners with regard to the bike barn. I think the rest of us would support 18 covered spaces. Maybe we need time to work with the applicant as far as the location is concerned. If we can work that out today, fine. The other issue is the reduced parking suggested by Commissioner Blau. Commissioner Brooks has indicated that she would be concerned about that. And we do have two uses of this property. It's a residential use, and then there's the meeting room. A conditional use permit is even being requested for that. So I think we have to take into account the parking requirements for that as well. Commissioner Brown, can I ask how you feel about the reduced parking onsite?
You know, it's interesting, you're driving around Ivy and you always see cars parked on, well, you see them everywhere. So I would support Commissioner Brooks. I think that should be used as a parking space, so not to reduce it.
Commissioner Blau, last word.
I would just, if it was necessary to get the bike racks, I'd trade the bike racks for the parking. If it's not necessary, you can put the bike racks in and keep the parking. That's even better. I was just giving, I was more important to me to have the bike racks than it was the parking space. Last question, and it's not just another issue, but, and I, there may be a reason for it, but I don't understand why this is not the handicap space and that these, they'll stay the same. I mean, normally the ADA requires that you have your access for the ADA to be the least distance traveled to the building. I don't really care, but just to give you that thought. You'll decide that later when you get forward to the plan check, but if you did the bike racks here and you made this the handicap space, I think it makes a lot more sense because you get dual use out of the crosshatching. But wherever, there's plenty of women in sight to get the six more bike barns.
Okay. Back to Ms. Black.
Mr. Chair, perhaps we want to just trail this item to, after item number two, and provide the applicant and staff some time to look at the issues and see if we can wrap this up today.
I have a problem with that, in that I'm probably not going to be here at the end of item two, so I'd like to vote on this item.
Would you like it to come back right at one when we return?
I think that would be better. Can we try and get together with applicant between now and one?
Sure.
Okay. All right. So do we need a motion to trail, or can I just indicate? We're going to take our lunch break now, and we will be back here at 1:00 with the completion of item number one and the beginning of item number two. Thank you. This is the Santa Barbara County Planning Commission meeting of December 7, 2011. We're on item one, and we're back at the point where staff is doing, has done some modifications to the project description and conditions. So let's hear about those, Mr. Bell.
Thank you. Following the direction, we sat down for a few minutes with the applicant and went through some proposed revisions, and we'll present those to you now. We've given you a handout, and I'll present them on the PowerPoint presentation, and there's some additional handouts on the table showing the actual strikeouts in language. The first revision is the global change that we talked about, which was the reduction of the parking spaces from 28 to 27 spaces. So we would simply note that where it appears in the staff report and the conditions of approval, including the project description. The second provision regards the modification to condition one regarding the meeting room, and I'll show you some express language about that in just one moment. And then we've also added, in discussing with the applicant, that we would add six covered parking, bicycle parking spaces within the front yard setback. We would retain the 12 parking, vehicle parking spaces onsite. So it may be that the storage shed is eliminated or replaced by the actual bike barn. We also modified condition 10, which I'll share the specific language in just a moment to clarify several points regarding the lease, including the annual or notification of any termination. The Co-op will purchase the parking spaces and parking permits on an annual basis to accompany the actual lease agreement. So they will have those spaces available as opposed, I mean, actually have access to them, as opposed to just having them potentially available. It will be part of the project. In discussing the revisions that we have here, and the fact that the applicant is going to be providing the full number of parking spaces required, the applicant felt that adding the deed restriction to restrict the number of vehicles owned by the residents, the students, would be unnecessary. Staff agrees with this and distinguishes it from some other projects where this was used elsewhere in Isla Vista, where the parking numbers were actually not going to be satisfied. That is, the parking provided was notably less than what was required. And as a result, the deed restriction was to help ensure that there would be adequate parking. But in this case, since we have adequate number of spaces, we agree that the deed restriction would not be necessary. In terms of the actual language itself, on condition one, in regard to the meeting room, we replaced the term occasional dinners with the language suggested by the applicant, which would be up to four meals on an annual basis. We also clarified that the meeting room will not be used by or rented to non-Co-op uses. So we just struck out the not-for-profit language there. We also added in the project description, and it'll be covered elsewhere in the staff report as necessary, that we'll have three parking, bicycle parking structures with a capacity of up to 18 bicycles. And then in addition, we'll have the 12 uncovered spaces. The last one is deals with condition 10, where we simply corrected the number of spaces from 16 to 15 to reflect the reduction in one parking space. And then we also added language to clarify in the first portion under plan requirements that the project, that the parking spaces have been secured for the project as opposed to shall be available. We also added language that the agreement require that the applicant notify the county within 90 days prior to termination of the lease. And then we made the timing requirement a bit more specific and consistent with the timing of the project. Rather than having the lease executed prior to issuance of the land use permit, we simply tied it to occupancy clearance. That gives the applicant a little more time and less expense in terms of their construction period, where they wouldn't actually be using those parking spaces until the facility is occupied. And those are the changes that we propose.
All right, Mr. Bell, thank you. Commissioner Blau.
So pulling your last slide presentation back up. So they notify you 90 days prior to termination of the lease, so what, what can you do about that?
At that point, if there was not going to be adequate parking available, then that would affect the validity of the permit, and the county would have to work with the applicant to take action to correct that, to find parking at another location or otherwise provide available parking. I mean, that's part of the project description, is that that parking is available.
I understand. I understand. Well, I guess my question is, so a year from now or two years from now, the parking lease is terminated, are you going to throw the students out until they get new parking? Does their PD permit get revoked? I'm not sure I understand what the point of that is. If we don't know what the penalty is going to be, what's the point of notifying that the lease is terminated?
Well, the idea is that, one, the county would receive advance notice of the lease being terminated. So rather than finding about it after the fact or some point later, we would know at some point, you know, at least 90 days in advance. That would give us an opportunity to begin working with the applicant. If all else fails, the county does have zoning enforcement provisions that we can effect to ensure that the permit and the use is in compliance with the conditions of approval.
I think there's a clear connection, Commissioner Blau, in the sense that any other project where a certain number of spaces is required, if there's a change, say, part of a parking lot is converted to other uses and the spaces go away, the county's able to come in and say, this is an important condition to your project, so we're going to require you to come in and apply for a change, a modification. So I think the key is the notice, and we're requiring that the lease itself provide that notice is going to be given to the county. So I'm happy with the change in that regard. But I understand your point. It's not laid out in this paragraph as to what the consequences will be, but I don't think there's any ambiguity as far as the applicant is concerned. They know, what we're really saying is, look, there's a parking requirement of 27 spaces. We're allowing them to have some of those spaces offsite. If they were onsite, it would be the same thing. We need to have 27 spaces throughout the life of the project.
Doesn't work for me. I mean, if you added language in there that says, in the event they can't secure subsequent parking spaces, that their PD permit is terminated, they've got 90 days to, you know, I just don't understand. I don't like that kind of language, I don't like that kind of ambiguity. It doesn't tell me what happens if they're unable to continue to get the spaces. Now, I realize they say it's not going to be a problem, but it, I have a separate issue on the, not a separate issue, but I have the same issue with the deed restriction. If I had the deed restriction, I wouldn't be concerned, I wouldn't care less. That was the reason for the deed restriction, because I don't think, this doesn't give me parking control in perpetuity. At best, it does it for 30 years, but it's ambiguous to me.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Blau, a note handed to me by the agent, Lisa, for the applicant. She said, we could find other spaces or deed restrict the project at that time if they came up against that problem, or the number of residents could be reduced until parking could be resolved, which is one solution. Two solutions, actually.
Mr. Chair, I'd be a little bit hesitant to try and include every possible method of resolving this. I mean, basically, the project would be out of compliance with their conditions of approval. We'd issue a notice of violation, and then we would work with the project proponents to ensure that they come back into compliance with their conditions. They may come back to the commission and modify them, to put a deed restriction in place, or any number of other things. But I think to try and anticipate all of those today is a little bit difficult. So what we would do is we would essentially pursue it as a violation and look to correct that violation.
Okay. Mr. Drew?
No, Mr. Chair, I just want to make it clear too, when I was reading this, I'm in line with Ms. Black on that we would resolve it at that time and look at what avenues of correction that we could use, but I was just offering this, this is something from the applicant.
Okay. Other comments from Commissioners on the proposed changes? Commissioner Blau?
Just one, backing up to the first slide, we were talking about where you're not going to have a deed restriction. Again, I just to tell you, it bothers me in the fact that we are more than 500 feet for the off-street parking. In reality, we as much as 2,300 feet, which is a lot different than 500. In reality, we as much as 2,300 feet, which is a lot different than 500 feet. And I also don't think it's necessary that we require them to necessarily purchase the parking permits. What we talked about earlier was that if the county puts them on notice that there's a problem, they could insist at a later date that they lease the parking. But here, I think what we're doing is forcing them to pay a fee or incur an expense that may not be necessary. And I heard the applicant, I think, earlier talk about the fact they were hoping not to do that. They'd like to not spend the money if it's not necessary. If we have the deed restriction and there is not a reason for them to lease the additional 15 parking spaces, or maybe they only need two or three, I think that saves them money and it serves the purpose. And as long as they're reporting to you annually as to what the situation at the lease is, the staff would have the ability to say, "Look, we've got a problem. We've had complaints. You've got more than the 40% you thought you would have. Lease this number of spaces." Now, I'm gonna, I'm going to go along with the commissioners that's in this district as to what they wanna do, but I think that is a better solution. So, offer that as an alternative, and if the commissioner, this is a second district, third district?
Third district.
Third district, thank you. So, if the third district commissioner agrees, that's the way I'll stand. If the third district commissioner agrees with staff and doesn't wanna make these other changes, I am willing to go along with that to get this project approved, but I don't think it's the best set of conditions.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes, I am comfortable with what staff has come up with. I really appreciate the time that you took during the lunch hour, you know, to resolve some of these questions that we have. As far as, I am very pleased that UCSB and this group, you know, have worked together to come up with a solution for parking and that the spaces are available. If the co-op, it is a co-op, they will collect the money, the fees, from the students. If they're, you know, agreeable to going ahead and purchasing in, I guess, a bulk, if you will, in a cooperative way, getting those 15 spaces, I'm more comfortable with that, you know, than a deed restriction. I think a deed restriction, in many cases, is more difficult to enforce. And I think by having those 15 spaces as decided, I think, you know, that that, I'm okay with that. And I think, you know, I would hope that my colleagues would support that. And the other revisions that were made, I also support.
Commissioner Brown?
Mr. Chair, I don't understand why the applicant has a problem with the deed restriction. Is there some, perhaps you can explain to me?
Ms. Black?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brown, I think the issue was, we shouldn't have to both purchase the parking passes and do a deed restriction. And my concern about not purchasing the parking at UCSB is, if they don't purchase it, it's not gonna be reserved for them for 30 years. So, I don't believe that we'll have the option of, in year five, to say, "Well, now you need UCSB's parking," because I'm pretty much guarantee they're gonna allocate it to somebody else who is paying for that, those spaces. So, I think that was the concern, is not to require both the deed restriction and the payment of the parking.
Commissioner Blau?
Well, I'm not sure who prepared the lease exhibit, but that's, it appears to me to be done by the University of California, Santa Barbara. And the way that, the way it reads in there now is, for the next 30 years, they have the right to purchase between 0 and 16 on this document. And that, that option is an annual option that occurs every year for the 30 years. So, yes, you do have the right to insist that they lease the space if the exhibit I'm seeing before me is the language they're gonna use.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Blau, that's a draft document, and we're gonna have to work through that with county council to make sure that whatever restrictions are in that lease are reflected in that condition, condition 10. So, they're gonna have to be, they have to coincide in terms of applicability and enforceability.
And I would agree with that, but what is presented to us right now from the university is an annual option, and they can decide every year to take 0 up to 16. So, Ms. Black's comments, I think, are not correct. I mean, there is going to be, if this is the way it's written, then there is gonna be the way to insist upon it annually. They can't allocate to somebody else, 'cause they've reserved these spaces for the next 30 years.
Commissioner Blau, as usual, eloquently have stated the argument, and I think there are some good arguments for reserving the full 15 upfront, even though it's a cost. I don't think it's an unnecessary cost. And as a long-ago resident of Isla Vista, I think one of the benefits of having those spaces allocated to the co-op is that some vehicles that aren't used by co-op members but are nonetheless used to occasionally transport them from home to Isla Vista and to various shopping locations throughout the south coast, will find their way off the streets of Isla Vista into those reserved parking spaces. And I think the co-op board, which is made up primarily of students, will be inventive enough to make good use of those spaces if they're available. So, I think the entire community may benefit. And in the event that this action of the planning commission is reviewed by another authority, such as the Coastal Commission, I think the Coastal Commission would also appreciate the fact that those 15 spaces are nailed down rather than as needed. So, you know, I'm just saying, there are arguments on both sides. We need to move forward with the project. We all support the project, and I think the tools that we disagree on are not as important as getting to the goal. So, you have the last word.
Just to say that that's fine. As I said earlier, I could do it either way. I can do it where they pay for the 15 spaces on an annual basis to require to do so. My preference is to do it another way, and I bring, I bring that up just to fully vet the issue and to make sure that we make the best decision we can make. So, if the second district commissioner is more comfortable with this condition, I'm prepared, I'm prepared to support it with these conditions.
Okay. So, Commissioner Brooks, it's in your jurisdiction to make a motion, but I think county council has requested that we take a brief break to give her a chance to nail one of these issues down before we take our vote. So, let's come back in five minutes, and we'll take action.
Okay. In the IV Master Plan, I think the addition of the affordable housing, it was very, very important in IV. Again, I think I mentioned earlier, but the agreement that will be reached with UCSB with the parking, I think it's certainly a step in the right direction as far as having the university share, you know, some of their amenities, you know, with the community of I think the, we heard from a neighbor, the improvements that will be made as a part of this project, you know, certainly will be welcomed. I know, you know, we have our concerns with the parking, but one thing I did notice during my site visit, many students were running toward the bus, and I understand the bus, you know, the schedules, everything, you know, is improved. Many more students are taking buses with what the IV Master Plan. I hope the continued downward trend of automobile use will certainly affect and improve the parking situation out there. This, the county does support this project and has in the past. I think we're headed in the right direction. I do appreciate the students coming in today, taking the time from their busy schedules. It's nice to see that the values of the co-op certainly will bring improvement, you know, to this area, and I hope that we can, I look forward to seeing these improvements. And so, with that, I am going to make the motion that we move staff recommendations, make the required findings, determine project is exempt from CEQA, approve the development plan with modifications, approve the conditional use permit with the modifications, approve the coastal development permit, and that we include the revisions as listed above or as discussed this afternoon by the staff. Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Brown, I know you're referring to the staff report dated August 9, 2011 for the basis of your motion, as subsequently modified and today modified. Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, don't see any, so the roll call. Mr. Villalobos?
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Blau?
Aye.
And Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero.
Great. Thank you very much. We'll take a two-minute break to transition to the next item.
Chair, Cooney, we're ready to move on to our next item, which is item two. And Mr. Villalobos, would you please read that into the record?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Following is courtesy review of a proposal to construct a 60,000-square-foot medical center for Sansom Clinic. The purpose of the hearing is to allow the county planning commission and county residents the opportunity to provide comments to the city of Santa Barbara regarding this development proposal.
Okay, thank you. With that, we'll have our, Ms. Black, would you like to introduce our guest for this courtesy review?
Sure. Madam Chair, members of the commission, I think this may be the first time we've had a courtesy review with the city of Santa Barbara. So, we have a planner from the city of Santa Barbara here today, Allison Debusk, to present the Tobes-Foot Hill Center project to you. We also have representatives from the Tobes Group and, I think, probably from Sansom as well, right, here. And as is indicated in your agenda, this is really for you to provide comments to the city of Santa Barbara. Ms. Debusk will bring those back to the city planning commission, and they'll be considering your comments in their deliberations as well. So, thank you for coming.
Ms. Debusk?
Thank you. Good afternoon, planning commissioners. My name is Allison Debusk, and I'm a project planner with the city of Santa Barbara. And the project today affects three parcels that are currently within the county's jurisdiction but are within the city's sphere of influence. Those three parcels are proposed to be annexed into the city of Santa Barbara and zoned for commercial development. The site is often referred to as the Foothill Triangle, because it's located at the intersection of Foothill Road and Siena Guitis Road and Highway 154. The lower parcel is currently developed with the Foothill Pet Hospital, and that is proposed to remain, no changes. The other two parcels, which total just over four acres, are proposed to be developed with a medical office building, and that would be approximately 60,000 square feet. The applicant is here to provide additional details on that portion of the project. And I'm gonna discuss the project's current status and then the next steps for the project. The application was initially submitted to the city in 2001, and in 2003, the city council initiated annexation of the properties into the city. The project has evolved since that time, and the city has had several concept reviews, both design reviews and by our planning commission, on the various iterations of the project over those 10 years. Staff anticipates that the project will be deemed complete very soon, and once deemed complete, staff will begin environmental review of the project. We anticipate that that will require preparation of a mitigated negative declaration. Following environmental review, the project would go before the city's planning commission for a decision. And at this point, we anticipate a planning commission hearing date sometime in April 2012. And as mentioned previously, we're here today to get your comments, and those comments would be brought back to our planning commission for their consideration on the project. And that completes my presentation. Thank you.
Okay. And there are other speakers, I believe?
Madam Chair, I believe that the applicant's going to present the actual project to your commission, so you might wanna call on them next.
All right. Then, if the, Mr. Lyons will come forward, we'll hear that.
Good afternoon, commissioners. While we load our presentation, we have a few slides that will, the Tobes Group will be giving, and then it'll be followed up with a few slides from representatives of Sansom. So, is, you ready for us? Again, Allison, thank you for the introduction on the project. Again, courtesy review. So, we're here just to give you an overview of the project. We can go ahead and start with the slides.
You've got the keyboard.
I was at the keyboard. It blended in. Again, Mr. Tobes has owned this property for about 12 years now. And when he acquired it, the property was approved with, or has been approved with his shopping center design. And so, we're just providing you a little bit of previous project design and history. And you'll see in around 1999, this is an approved shopping center design for the, for In 2002, the project was redesigned with more of a central office building design, about 70,000 square feet. At this time, Fielding Institute was slated for the project and conceptually envisioned for it. There was an economic development designation for the site as well. About 2010, the project again was redesigned, and this included a three-office building design, again hovering around 70,000 square feet. This, this design had a lot more influence or feedback from the city. We received feedback that the buildings should be pulled closer to the street in association with their design guidelines. So, you see the shift in the, in the, in the concept of the project design. This is a current site plan, and relatively, you know, between 2010, 2011, the change that you see in the two site plans between here and here was just the removal of what is Building B on this site plan. And that was in part to meet Sansom needs. We've been working closely with Sansom Medical Clinic in meeting their parking and facility This is a rendering of the project looking northwest. So, you're, you're standing on Siena Guitis, looking towards the mountains. This is another rendering, looking southwest. So, this is essentially on the far side of the intersection of Foothill and Siena Guitis. You'll notice in this rendering, that you can't really tell in plan view much, but the site is designed to be below grade on Foothill. So, the buildings are actually sunk, if you will. There's a grade difference right off Foothill. So, that, you know, although we're, we're under the maximum building heights, it's also articulated to be even lower in height due to the site grading. Just a couple bullet points, because we've been, you know, we've been asked about the environmental status. Remediation did begin in 1980, and it's continued through the, to the 90s. The contamination was in the groundwater, not the soils. We've been working with the previous operator, ExxonMobil, very closely on this. In 2005, there was a health risk assessment that essentially said that, you know, it proved that there were no adverse impacts to human health. Most recently, we've been working with the fire department as the regulator on the site, and we've agreed, and it'll be part of the initial study when we move forward, that we're going, we're currently updating the tests that are conducted in the health risk assessment, and those will be incorporated into the initial study. Just to illustrate, again, that the conclusions of the tests are similar to, or coincide with what was evaluated in 2005. There is some active work on the site. Go back real quick. Well, my site plan doesn't show it, but there is some active work on the site, and the work that's being conducted- that's being conducted now is what we call grouting, or it's the removal of two existing interceptor trenches that were put way back in the '80s. And they're essentially 45 and 65-foot trenches in the ground. They're filled with gravel. They haven't been in use for a number of years. There hasn't been any reason to abandon them until recently, now that we have a project going on. So we are underway, or ExxonMobil's underway, in grouting those trenches, just so the public knows that, you know, there is active work and that's being regulated by the county fire Again, the last two bullet points are just illustrating that there's an update to the health risk assessment and that, you know, should any conclusions come out of the recent testing that are different than what was concluded in 2005, you know, we'll address those and if there's any required mitigation measures, those could be part of the conditions. Just a quick slide on, again, our anticipated project timeline and approval. Again, most recent DART summit went in on the 15th of November. As Allison indicated, we think will be deemed complete or we're anticipating being deemed complete. Environmental review and planning commission in and around March and April of next year. Entitlement, May of 2012. Building permits likely be pulled at the end of next year and we anticipate about a year-long construction process. So we anticipate being ready at the end of next year or the beginning of 2014. We've also provided the approvals required. Again, Board of Architectural Review, development plan, there is a general plan and zoning amendments on the city's side, voluntary lot merger, finalize the economic development designation, and then LAFCO is the lead agency on the annexation to the city of Santa Barbara. I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Kurt Ranselhoff, who will be giving a few slides on Sansom's background. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Craig. Thank you for letting us talk with you today. If I can figure out how to use this, the down arrow, I assume? My name's Kurt Ranselhoff and I'm the CEO and the medical director at Sansom Clinic. What I'll do is just take a moment to tell you a little bit about us and some background and then explain to you why it is that this project is important for us. We're really a regional, large clinic. We're the largest between Los Angeles and San Francisco. Since the mid-1970s, we have been a nonprofit. We are technically a 1206L medical foundation. We're a public benefit corporation. We have 21 facilities between Carpinteria and Santa Maria. We have about 2,000 patients a day who come to see us at our various facilities. We see about 150,000 different people during the course of a year who make about half a million visits of all types, laboratory visits and x-rays and colonoscopies and what have you. About one out of every two people in southern Santa Barbara County use Sansom Clinic and probably about one in four overall in the county are our patients. Our mission statement here is to provide excellence and comprehensive health care through teamwork, community collaboration, research and education. I think that we certainly strive to do that and hopefully achieve doing that every day. We like to say we're from pediatrics to geriatrics. We have a full range of specialties from primary care to more than 30 different specialties. We're accredited by the Institute for Medical Quality. In fact, we just received a three-year accreditation a few days ago. We have about 180 doctors and other healthcare providers and about 800 employees. This is our 90th anniversary, which we're very proud of. Just to let you know some of the community service programs that we do, in collaboration with the neighborhood clinics, we actually provide free MRIs, CAT scans, ultrasounds and different cardiology procedures for their patients who cannot afford to have them. There's a picture of Mr. Ealing's there because we are in the process of doing, actually it'll be the largest one of its kind in the country, of a screening colonoscopy program for patients who can't afford them. People wonder if your colonoscopy is free, if that makes you want it anymore, and it turns out, it really doesn't. But we will have done 300 of those shortly, which will make it the largest one of its kind. We've given out about 100,000 flu shots over the last decade to people. If they can't, don't feel that they can afford it, we don't ask them to pay. We have about 10,000 people a year who participate in our 300 free or low-cost classes annually. So what is the project? Craig just explained it, but let me give you a little bit of idea of what will be going on inside those buildings. In Building A, the large building on Foothill, will be a surgery center and then medical offices for those specialties, urology, orthopedics, podiatry, ophthalmology. I think actually ENT might be in the other building. What those all have in common is that they're all surgical specialties that use operating rooms, but they also are specialties that don't necessarily need to be immediately next to the hospital. General surgery, for instance, or cardiology, you really need to be immediately next to the hospital. These are specialties that use operating rooms but don't need to be immediately next to the hospital. Again, you'll notice that we have a surgery center planned for Building A. In the other building, we'll have physical therapy, which we want to have close to orthopedics, facial plastic surgery, which probably will go with ENT in that building. Most of the activity that will occur in there, really more than 95% of that will just be regular doctor visits. A minority of the visits are, will be ambulatory surgery center operations, so most of the activity is just going to be routine doctor visits. Why are we doing this? For many reasons. Probably the most important one is this notion of being able to put these specialties that will use these operating rooms immediately next to the operating rooms. That's a huge benefit for our patients, we think, and for the physicians in terms of time. Just this morning, actually, a real-life example, I saw a patient who really needs a procedure, it's not an emergency, but it should be done soon. Getting the time for the urologist to get the time carved out of the office, finding operating room time elsewhere, it'll be a little bit of a delay as opposed to, in this model, I suspect that the guy, the person probably could have had it done today. So it's that kind of efficiency that we're looking to be able to achieve, which we do think will be extremely helpful. We do need new facilities. Our facilities are getting old. We need to have new facilities to be able to recruit the kind of doctors that we have recruited to this community for 90 years. It is what people are looking for, both patients and physicians. Again, physicians are expecting us to have the most modern technology. We are just installing, actually, really, I think, the best electronic health record, a very large $7 million project, which is great that we have that, but we need to do something about our aging facilities. So you guys are experts in this and I don't need to, you will understand this better than I, but we are certainly intent on doing whatever we need to do to make it a pleasing environment for our patients and for the community. And these are some of the things that we are considering. Again, probably the biggest benefit that we see is this efficiency issue. Also, there are apt to be significant changes in healthcare that are coming. This will give us a great deal of flexibility by having an ambulatory surgery center within our own walls in terms of being able to meet the needs of the community. Again, this efficiency issue. We do think that, and this is a trend in medicine over the last many years, that procedures that used to be performed in the hospital are now being performed in an outpatient setting that has every indication of continuing. And again, this should allow us to meet that demand and the need. This issue about being able to be flexible about whatever reimbursement changes are coming, we really don't understand what exactly is coming, except everybody's aware that it is coming at the moment. And again, this issue of expanding access to newer and better facilities for our patients, staff and doctors. Our goal, obviously, is to continue to play an important role, the same kind of role that we've been playing in this community for the last 90 years. We hope that this will be a step to a long future. So, in terms of the benefits to the community, what we, this is a slide we actually presented to the neighbors, just comparing it to the shopping center that, at least at some point along the way, had been proposed. We think that this would be less traffic, certainly fewer operating hours, shorter delivery hours. When I saw that slide initially, I thought, we're not going to deliver babies here and with the mix of doctors, podiatrists and orthopedists, you would not want to try to deliver a baby there. But there certainly should be less delivery hours in terms of products being delivered to the facility. We do intend on having plenty of lighting inside the building, but there should be a requirement for less lighting than certainly a shopping center has on the outside. And I do believe that we have endeavored to make sure that we provide adequate parking so that we won't intrude upon the neighbors. Happy to answer any questions that you might have about why it is that we want to do this. And again, thanks for giving us the chance to tell you about it.
Okay, commissioners, any questions at this time? Okay, Commissioner Brown?
Thank you. I actually have some questions for Mr. Minus. So the, just because this is going to be new in the area and a rather a big building adjacent to residential properties, the comparison in height, I guess, with this building with the ones next door, they'll be comparable or the apartments, can you just describe that for me? So if I'm going west or going east on Foothill, there won't be much of a disparity, it won't rise above them because you had indicated that the project's going to be below, slightly below Foothill, I guess?
Yeah. You know, as I articulated before, I believe the city's height requirement's 45 feet in that zone district.
Right.
If I recall, my plans were below that. And again, the site grading to keep that below Foothill will keep it in scale with the adjacent apartments.
And what happens to their remediation wells now at the current time on the north, on the western side of the project?
The monitoring wells?
Yeah.
We'll need to work with ExxonMobil on those, particularly in any relocations of the wells, the monitoring wells. That's something that needs to take place.
So they're, they will be there to remain? They will stay there?
Yeah. What'll happen over the next year or so is we'll need to coordinate with them and find out and work with the fire department on if any can be removed and which ones need to be relocated.
And yeah, I guess the last question I have for Mr. Minus is that, and I, this is an email we got from a community member who's talking about sort of the unkempt nature of the property, and I did forward this to Mr. Minus. And I would appreciate, just because I did drive by there today and usually a Tobes project looks somewhat better and somewhat better condition, even though I realize it's, there have been issues with this property. So are you going to be sort of in the interim between now until the time you start construction? Will there be some effort to kind of make it look better than what it does now?
Yeah, and I appreciate you forwarding on that email. We, you know, we've been by the site a number of times since email. You know, one thing I felt to explain in my presentation was that we did conduct a neighborhood meeting that was held at the end of September and we invited all the adjacent neighbors within 500 feet of the project to come in and give us some feedback. And my impression of the feedback was that, generally speaking, everyone was really in favor of the project. Again, some of them noted that it's been a rundown site for some time and they'd like to see some improvement. With respect to keeping it, the upkeep between now and then, yeah, we've committed to that. We'll be doing weed abatement, we'll fix the fences. You know, there is some active work on there, so the materials and the equipment will likely remain, but we've asked ExxonMobil to help keep it tidy.
Okay. That's the only questions I have of Mr. Minus. I have one for the planner from, if I can ask.
Do you want to go ahead?
Yes, thank you. Just looking at your overall site plan and a question, I know I have high regards for your ABR because they really have great standards and I used to watch their meetings a lot and really appreciate all the very fine work they do. But in looking, and I realize this is probably just a concept plan, so that you really don't have a full landscape plan yet, but is there any requirement to have a certain number of trees per certain number of parking spaces in the city of Santa Barbara? And the reason I ask that, I don't see, I just see trees along the perimeter and I don't see them sort of, if you were doing a cool cities type of thing, trying to shade the parking lot, we don't, we don't have it in this sort of concept plan. So perhaps you could address that question.
Sure. Commissioners, the city does have requirements for parking lots in terms of landscaping.
Yes.
However, trees aren't specifically identified. That is something that the ABR will work with the applicant on as the project progresses. As you can see, the landscape plan is fairly rough.
Right.
At this point in time.
Okay. And the other question I have is your parking lot lights, do you have certain standards for height and also for dark sky shielding and things like that?
Commissioners, the city does have a lighting ordinance, which requires the lights to be shielded and aimed downward. I don't believe it includes a standard, but the Architectural Board of Review typically requires that they be as low as possible for safety.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Yes, Commissioner Bilal?
Not sure appropriate by, I don't have a good questions. I have a couple of comments. I'm wondering if you want to, as Acting Chair asks for any public comment, and then I'll just make my comments first.
Okay. Well, I think, I see Mr. Bob Bratman has come into the room. Mr. Bratman, would you like to give a report at this time before we get public comment?
Good afternoon. My name is Bob Bratman. I'm the executive officer for the Local Agency Formation Commission, LAFCO, which regulates the boundaries of local governments. I was here in order to answer any questions you might have. For this property project to proceed in the city, it will need to be annexed to the city. The property is within the sphere of influence of the city. That's a LAFCO adopted plan for the probable physical boundaries and service area, so the city's sphere already encompasses the property. At some point in the future, we anticipate receiving an application from the city. Before we can process that, there needs to be a property tax exchange agreement between the county and the city as for all annexations, and that's fairly routine. But if you have any questions, I'd be happy to respond to those.
Okay, I don't see any questions at this time. Thank you, though, for coming. Appreciate it. Okay, did anyone else want to speak about the project or, okay, all right, and no public comment? Okay, so we'll bring it back to the commission at this time. Okay, Commissioner Bilal?
Yeah, my only comment is, is that having been in the hospital and doctor offices, a whole lot there is way too often. One of my biggest complaints is taking access to the parking lot on a public street. And I see, I just take a cursory glance at this site plan, it's a typical 25, 30-foot wide drive entrances and straight streets and so forth. And I wonder if they just might want to consider left-turn pocket lanes, right-hand pocket lanes that it did, so that when, because you've got a tremendous number of people that are entering and exiting this property every day. I mean, you're talking about 2,000 patients, you're talking about several hundred employees. And it always concerns me and I have great difficulty getting in and out of some of the parking lots, especially medical and hospitals. So I would just hope that the developer and the city would take a look at that issue. If there's some way, when there are people that are making the right-hand turn into the parking lot or making a left-hand turn, that you allow some stacking room and some indentations into the site so that people can be slow in making the right and left-hand turns and yet through traffic can continue on. hand turns, and yet through traffic can continue on unimpeded. So if you just take a look at it, I realize that those can be very expensive. I think on this site, it might not be. And I just think it would really aid the patients and the residents to address that issue and take a look at it. I know as a person that has to get in and out of there frequently these days, it would have made a lot of difference. And I'll give you the worst example. I went to Mountain View, I think it was. That's one great, new, nice hospital, and that traffic pattern and that parking lot is terrible. I mean, it's very difficult to make movements around there, and I would hope you would take a look at that for this project. I think it would really help your patients. That's my only comment. I think the rest of the project's great.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. I would just like to make the comment, I guess it has to do with parking also. We have a lovely Sansom Clinic up in Lompoc, in the city of Lompoc, and the community was very glad to see them come in. I would say it was greatly underparked. In the adjacent shopping center, not long after the clinic opened, these signs appeared, "No Sansom Parking, No Sansom Parking." So hopefully, you've learned your lesson on that one. And, you know, it's very, very popular. You know, everybody in the valley, in the Lompoc Valley, you know, is glad that Sansom's there, but we hope that the parking will be adequate, you know, for this site, because it was, and I think it still is, a problem up there. There's a nice vacant lot right in front of it, so I'm sure somebody, you know, might be interested in selling that. But that's the only, you know, only comment I have. Okay. Well, we appreciate everyone coming down for the courtesy review. Staff, do you have anything you want to say?
Mr. Chair, or Madam Chair, no. Thank you, and I think that concludes our business for the day.
Just one last comment. There's at least three sets of plans up here. Mr. Tobes, if you want to come back with you, you're welcome to. We discussed this morning how in the future, we're going to be doing 11-by-17s and PD discs. So if you could reuse these plans again, you're welcome to my set, and I know they're expensive to have pre-produced, so save a tree perhaps. That's it for me. I'm done.
Thank you. So, meaning adjourned. Thank you.